Slazokamatio Mateo. I call this meeting on Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 7:03 PM. I'll go ahead and get started with our land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Lishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Mickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. All right, moving right along. We'll jump onto item four ceremonial matters in which Vice Mayor McQuaid will give proclamation for National Crime Victims Rights Week. And I believe we have a couple guests here to receive that proclamation, Tanya Jacobs and Todd Davis. Okay.
And if you'd like to come up and join me here, that would be great.
And now we got a party.
City of Albany proclamation. In recognition of National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through 12th, 2025. Whereas more than 26 million people become victims of crime each year with these crimes also affecting family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas the Alameda County Victims' Witness Division is dedicated to ensuring the rights of crime victims and their families by providing services to aid in their recovery from the emotional, psychological, social, and economic impact of crime as they reclaim their sense of safety, well-being, and dignity. And whereas the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Program was the first such program established in 1974 to reduce the trauma that victims and witnesses experience by providing emotional, physical, financial, and financial assistance. And whereas program services include crisis intervention, emergency assistance, orientation to the criminal justice system, court, and court accompaniment. And whereas in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, to provide a permanent source of support for crime victim services and compensation, Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division partners with survivors, community service providers, criminal justice professionals, and victim advocates working together to enhance a criminal justice system response that is accessible, culturally competent, and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas this year's theme of kinship is a call to action to recognize that shared humanity should be at the center of supporting all survivors and victims of crime. Now therefore, the Albany City Council does hereby proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2025, to be Victims' Rights Week in the City of Albany and reaffirms the commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and addressing their needs during Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year and express our appreciation for those victims and survivors of crime who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve the response of victims of crime and build a more just community. Signed, Robin Lopez, Mayor.
Who would like to say a few words?
Thank you. Good evening. So Mayor Lopez, City Council, our public and shareholders and stakeholders who we've partnered with throughout the years, we say thank you for allowing us to be here. As members of the Victim Witness Division, we like to think that we serve as liaisons between the victim and/or the client, and really the public, between the public and them and our District Attorney's Office. We hope that in our humblest way, we are able to help victims navigate the judicial and legal process. We hope we can provide services and support. Support comes in many different ways. Sometimes it's helping them fill out a form, other times it's offering that emotional support and being that carrying ear, and other times it can even be sitting on the stand during testimony, just to let them know that somebody's there. We thank you that you've decided to partner with our office and we're sure you've been partners for a long time. I'm humbled and honored to stand here as I know there have been other members of my office, two of them right here, my supervisor actually, so I'm trying to impress her, and of course, one of my colleagues, who's been doing it far longer than me. We hope that, at the very least, we reflect this office's commitment to justice, which is to make sure not just that a crime is charged and the turn is handed out, but that the victim essentially is treated with respect and dignity, provided the information they're needed to move forward, and most importantly, to let them know that somebody cares. We know you care because of this proclamation, and we hope that each and every day we can honor that proclamation with every step and with every word that we provide. We thank you once again for allowing us to be here, and we just hope that we continue this partnership. Thank you.
Well, as Todd had mentioned, my name is Tanya Jacobs. I am the representative for the North County area of Alameda. I'm the Victims of Crime Supervisor for our division. And throughout the years of serving in our community, not only have we understood that there's a crisis that's continuous to happen, but we do need the collaboration of community. We all have a story that we've heard before. We've all seen some tragedies in our communities. That's the reason why we are sitting here as an advocate for change. As we continue to come together and to advocate for what's right for our community, we ask that we continue to collectively work together and listen actively, being able to reflect on what we've seen, what we've experienced, and what we're hoping to see differently. And as we know, in order to see the change, we must be the change that comes first. So I ask everyone to be an advocate for this part of the process and continue to support our efforts within our communities across the county and within our local cities and our neighborhoods. Our children need us, our community need us, and we need us. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from council? Any?
Just thank you for the work and carrying on the great tradition of the county in doing this work.
And I'll just say really quickly, as someone who's come from a family of many folks who have experienced a multitude of crimes and we've had, you know, I've had families and close friends that have benefited from your services, appreciate you deeply and sincerely, and thank you for being here and thank you for facilitating the information that our public should be aware of, and I do look forward to ways in which we can be more strategic in partnering with the county and ensuring that folks all across the board have access to the right information, the right resources. I know it's not a change that happens overnight, but certainly it's a change that's happening. And so we do appreciate you and thank you for being here this evening. Do we have any comments from the public? Not seeing comments from the public, thank you. Oh, one.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Janelle Garcia, and I'm your neighbor over on Keynes Avenue. Yesterday, I encountered some Albany high school students hanging door hangers in our neighborhood.
We're not yet at public comment. Do you want to wait till Good of the City so you have your full three minutes? We'll come back to you when we're at the Good of the City. Thank you, sorry about that. Not seeing any other public comments for ceremonial matters. Again, thank you very much for being here, and again, look forward to ways in which we can collaborate and work with each other. Moving on to item number five, City Manager Report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We will show our new website on the screen. Hopefully, all have had a chance to check it out and see the new additions and new images. It is still a work in progress, so there, with any transition, there are a few things still to upgrade, or really just make sure all of the connections are working. So please let us know if you experience something that isn't quite connected, but it is certainly a significant improvement from our previous website, which was fairly dated, as these things can happen. And hoping that this is a very user-friendly format, and I am thrilled to share that the search function is much more usable. So take it for a spin and give us your feedback. And note that we have transitioned also from albanyca.org to albanyca.gov as mandated. A reminder, as all of you are likely aware, that we have new receptacles that have been delivered to each home and business in Albany. We are fully aware and share some of the concern expressed by a number of members of our community that the cart swap didn't exactly go as planned in all neighborhoods. Some neighborhoods were perfectly fine, and others, there could be a day or two gap in receiving the cart that was removed versus the cart that was replaced. Our staff is continuing to work with anyone that's experiencing issues in direct coordination with waste management, and please contact us so that we can help navigate through that process. It can be frustrating, and we completely understand that and are here to help. And as a reminder, this cart swap is because of SB 1383, which is intended to help us increase our diversion levels, both in recycling compost and awareness of what trash is consistently throughout the state. So thank you for your patience, and please reach out if assistance is needed. And we will continue to work with everyone to make sure you have the carts you need. Recently posted by city staff, the CAL FIRE State Agency Wildfire Hazard Severity Zone Maps have been released, and it's currently a review period for these severity maps. Interestingly, Albany isn't necessarily categorized that much on these maps, but I want to share that our fire chief, in coordination with our planning department, are looking at really what our local risks are and how those can be best categorized. This work is underway currently, and we anticipate bringing that conversation to the council very soon through a study session with the community, really looking at potential areas of risk in our own local jurisdiction, given the familiarity we all have with it, as opposed to perhaps these state-level maps. So more to come on that, and appreciation to the comments that have come in thus far. It will be an ongoing conversation so we can make sure we are doing what makes the most sense here in Albany. Also, April is Autism Awareness Month. You may have seen a recent communication from our police department incredibly proactive on how to serve those experiencing autism or family members around engagement. And in addition to the ongoing training that our officers receive on a regular basis, they've also now incorporated Carter Kits, which is a sensory kit to assist when engaging those with autism and sensory processing challenges. So appreciation to the department for, again, looking ahead at how to serve all members of our community and recognizing this through the public notification. The next citywide garage sale is May 3rd, and that is an event to be registered for. You can go to our website, albanyca.gov/garagesale, for information on how to register for that event. It's an opportunity for both reuse and recycle. I'd like to encourage folks to look at our website as well for available career opportunities, one of which is an actual internship, Habitat Restoration Internship for college students through Habitat Restoration Internship Program on Albany Hill. Interns will assist with survey and identification projects, help with educational outreach and signage, support native plant restoration and vegetation management work. Again, visit our website to check out this opportunity, and it is open until filled. Also, announcement about a Clean Water Program grant. The Alameda Countywide Clean Water Program is inviting grant applications for up to 6,000 per project to encourage grassroots community action that prevents stormwater pollution and enhances the health of local watersheds. You can learn more about this opportunity by going to cleanwaterprogram.org/grants. And that completes my report, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions from council? Any comments from the public? All right, thank you very much, City Manager. Moving on to item number six, Good of the City. Comments related to, the comments, excuse me, sorry. Items not on the council agenda are appropriately addressed at this time during Good of the City due to Brown Act laws or rules. We cannot comment on any statement made during Good of the City. Excuse me. City Clerk, how many people do we have online?
One online and three in person.
Okay, all right.
Hello. My name is Jean Wu. I live in Albany. I've lived in Albany for over 35 years. I was recently doing some stuff at the library and thinking about the parking lot. And I think the Albany parking lot would be a fantastic place to put solar and add EV charging and a battery system. And then also, at the same time, you could swap out the gas stoves in the community center for induction stoves. But if that seems really like a high bar, you can also just buy a bunch of induction hubs. They cost about $60 each. And I just talked to Lucinda, and she said maybe we could use DD funds because it's not that expensive. But I would like to do some cooking stuff, and I really would not like to use a gas stove. I think there needs to be an option for people learning to cook to use induction. So that's one suggestion. The other one is, of course, if you do swap them out and you include also adding the EV charging, the solar, and the batteries, then you could turn the community center into a resilience center, which is something that's actively being promoted by Ava Energy. So Ava Energy gave out, I believe, five grants in November of last year, and I believe they'll be doing another series of grants this year as well for communities who want to do a resilient center. So with about 100 to 150 kilowatts of solar and somewhere around 300 to 400 kilowatt hours of battery, you could provide for a minimum of four to five EV chargers and also support the load at the community center and provide resilience should the grid go down. So it would be a win for everyone, and it would be really a positive for the city because if you swapped out those induction stoves, you'd be also reducing the use of gas, which we know, a lot of people are really dedicated to their gas stoves. So we'd like to try to help people learn how to use an induction stove and feel confident that they could do that. So that was my thought, and I'm thinking that if the money does exist, either through grants or potentially something to do with Ava Energy, or we could use DD funds, there's probably more than one way to help fund this project, and it would support the city in terms of any large domestic fire or earthquake situation that might come up. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you for your comment.
Stephen Alpert and Celeste and Todd.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Stephen Alpert. My public comments have alerted Albany residents that the city follows only the minimum state mandate notifying those within 300 feet of new construction, regardless of project size, when in fact, for years, other California cities have used wider and varied notification to distinguish between small and large-scale projects. My remarks tonight commemorate the one-year anniversary of false assertions by Councilman Jordan and the city attorney that existing state laws would create legal exposure if Albany enacted wider and varied notification based on project size. Last week, all city officials received this email documenting the efforts by both individuals to avoid addressing 300-feet notification. Last January, I exposed Community Development Director Bond's blatant lie that state law precluded Albany from issuing statewide alerts for new construction. During the April 1st, 2024 council meeting, I suggested the city enact varied notification for small versus large-scale projects. As documented in the meeting video, Councilman Jordan responded, quote, "There was contention that Albany has latitude to notice beyond 300 feet." And, well, I'm going to offer that what I read was that the city would open itself to legal exposure if we were to pursue different noticing distances on a project based on the size of the project, that there is state law that would create legal exposure. Despite repeated requests that he produce these laws, for five months, Councilman Jordan refused to do so. Finally, on September 3rd, he cited Code 6508 and 65585(c)(3). When confronted on October 21 by an email from Michael Forbes, Director of Community Development for Beverly Hills with over 25 years' experience as a city planner, that neither code was at least bit applicable to public notification for new construction, Councilman Jordan doubled down, reasserting incorrectly that Code 6508, quote, "prohibits cities from discriminating against different projects based on their size." Director Forbes replied to this misinformation. "The city of Beverly Hills has not altered its noticing practices based on government Code 6508 or any other state law. At the national level, we are assaulted daily with lies and obfuscation. As a private citizen, one has few options to counter such, but not so at the local level. Clearly, some city officials are unaccustomed to being fact-checked, apparently convinced that everything they say in public, we accept it as factual. More than a dozen citizens have requested the council to consider expanding notification for large projects as enacted by other municipalities. 300-feet notice for new construction, regardless of project size, is not a matter, City Manager, for a private meeting with Director Bond. Instead, this issue merits extended public discussion."
Thank you for your comment.
My wife will continue.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Celeste Sparks. The practice of only notifying those within 300 feet clearly limits public discourse, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission to propose and the council to then push through new projects, no matter how inappropriate, with minimal awareness from the public. Such was the case for the oversized five-story modern box proposed for 1600 Salado Avenue. Only 73 properties were alerted by postcards mailed 10 days before the first planning and zoning hearing. By approving the plans for this project, assubmitted, the council violated every aspect of Albany's planning and zoning mission statement, which reads, "The purpose of design and review is to ensure that designs of projects are visually and functionally appropriate to their site and harmonious with their surrounds." Anyone with a sense of aesthetics can discern that the projects for 1600 Salado are neither visually and functionally appropriate nor... visually and functionally appropriate nor harmonious with the adjacent Craftsman-era buildings. With the three months, excuse me, three minutes allotted for public comments, Stephen and I have documented how three city officials, Community Development Director Bond, City Attorney Subramanian, and Councilman Jordan initially refused to respond and subsequently outright lied or for months engaged in obfuscation as to why Albany could not expand notification beyond the minimum 300-foot state mandate. If the council genuinely believes that alerting those only within 300 feet is appropriately for large multi-story projects, which impact all of Albany, then defend this practice. We ask you again, defend the practice you have! Submit 300-foot notification for proposed new construction as a meeting agenda item to allow for extended, in-depth public discussion that is so badly needed. Thank you for addressing the council.
Thank you for your comment.
We will be here every meeting until you do so.
Tom?
Hi. My name is Tom Steimek. I think we all kind of were not friends, but we all know each other now. I am here to really support this notification distance expansion. Excuse me. Regarding my background, I think you already know it, but I've been in Albany for over 40 years. I'm a licensed engineer, and up until recently, I've had a business here for over 20 years. So regarding the 50-foot distance, this comes up. And again, you may remember, it's not 50-foot, 300-foot distance. That's one block. So one block from Ordway to Ventura is 300 feet. Now, for our regular home remodel projects, I don't think anybody's opposed to that distance. But a four- or five-story building is really, it's a different animal. Depending on the topography, if you happen to be at the bottom of a hill and a five-story building goes up at the top of the hill, you know, you may not feel too good about that, but at least you'd like to know about it. Throughout my career, I've worked with a lot of different citizens in Albany and elsewhere. And I know the Albany population is quite a mix of nice people. They got some seniors like myself. They've got a lot of young people trying to move in here, and then the ones in between. And truthfully, they're not on top of all of this construction stuff, and they don't come to all of the meetings, as you might notice. And so I think, I'm baffled why just putting this evaluation as an agenda item is opposed. I mean, what's the harm in that? Get an agenda, take a look at it. Obviously, there's some disparity in what people consider legal and not legal, but I think a lot of information's been provided, and it just escapes me why, for the citizens of Albany, you just don't say, well, maybe this is something we ought to take a look at and make an agenda item, and with luck, an exploration committee would be formed and it'd move forward or it wouldn't. But it seems like that would be a good deal for the citizens of Albany, and I think they deserve that. So that's it.
Thank you for your comment. No more. All right. Thank you again. Moving on to item number seven, Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Does anyone on council wish to pull an item?
7-5 and 7-11.
7-5 and 7-11. Does any member from the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? All right. 7-5.
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for preparing and sending the letter regarding the mural artist. I think it's really important that we get that taken care of, so thank you. 7-11, I had a couple of minor tweaks that I'd like to suggest if we could do it without much of an upheaval on the policies and procedures. On page 37 DD2, "City Council Members Shall Keep Confidential Such Matters As Are Properly Before the City Council and Executives Close Session." I'm wondering if we could add language. And I originally thought in perpetuity that may not be the right phrase. I know there's a neighboring city who's having an issue with a council member who's now no longer on the council and is sharing confidential information with her client, who is, was the subject of the closed session. So it's become rather uncomfortable at best. And I'm wondering if there's a phrase we could put in there that would remind people that just because you're off council doesn't mean that becomes public knowledge.
Yes, we could add something to that.
Okay. And my other thought was on page 54, number five. It simply refers to you have been appointed. I think it should read, you have been elected slash appointed.
Yes, that would be appropriate, too.
If we can make those changes, I would move approval of consent.
All right. Looking for a second.
I will second.
City Clerk?
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, 8-1, Marin Avenue Pavement and Curve Ramp Rehabilitation Project. And we'll have city staff come up and give their presentation.
Apologies, a little technical difficulties. Can you see me now? My apologies. It wasn't quite set up here. Good evening, council members. I'm Alison Creo, the CIP manager, here with the City of Albany Public Works Department. With me tonight is Mark Hurley, Director of Public Works, Devora Zouter, our program manager, and Emma Shanethol from Bleach Engineering, the project designer representing the design Very excited to be here tonight. This has been a long project. It started with PTAP in 2019 and hopefully going into construction later this year. The Marin paving project, as I mentioned, started in 2019. It consists of all of Marin Avenue, the remainder that wasn't part of the undergrounding, from Cornell Avenue to Tulari Street. It's the city limits with the city of Berkeley, and includes three signalized intersections, one of which has been upgraded with the Masonic Intersections Project, and two more that are under this particular phase that we're talking about tonight. As I mentioned, 2019 was the impetus, 2019 Pavement Management Plan Update was the impetus of this project. With the beginning of this project recognizing its importance as a major corridor within the city of Albany, we brought the project to Transportation Commission to discuss transportation elements which were feasible to be included as part of the pavement rehabilitation program. These transportation elements were finalized in early 2022, around the same time as East Bay Mud identified a need to renew their water line in the areas between Key Route and Tulari Street. With that, we subdivided the project into two phases. Phase one, which needed to be coordinated with the Masonic Intersections Improvement, those were intricately tied together, we proceeded first with detailed design, followed by completion of that project and the East Bay Mud water line renewal in 2023. During the same period, we started the streetlight assessment project to identify kind of the existing conditions of streetlights within Albany. This identified that there were, there is a priority intersection safety lighting along Marin Avenue that we identified and proposed to council to include for design purposes. During this period, we also identified that there are operational signal needs, which I'll go into a little more depth in this presentation. Final design elements were presented to Transportation Commission late 2024, upon which we started construction document preparation in order to have a plan set ready this spring to ideally construct, construction this fall and target next season's paving schedule. That, jumping kind of smaller scale at the Phase Two project limit specifically, this project consists of 2.8 lane miles of paving, 35 catch basins, and 46 curb ramps. The approach to the corridor overall has been balancing community desires with kind of feasibility and design constraints that come with working within a fairly, one of our older streets. As you can see here, if you can see my, there you go. Existing condition includes wide sweeping corners that allow traffic to move quickly, extend pedestrian crossing distances, and often include angled crossings that are a challenge to navigate and a challenge for vehicles and pedestrians to be able to see each other. On the design considerations, the goal of the project is to preserve the pavement. That comes with requiring ADA curb ramp improvements, and this is a federal requirement, to bring ADA curb ramps into compliance with pavement rehabilitation projects. Additionally, we are, we've recognized that there's some signal visibility and reliability improvements that are desired and necessary, and our storm drains are in poor condition where they exist along this corridor. Example of our signals being obscured by trees, this is something we would not do nowadays, is planting a tree in front of a signal. And so we are proposing certain improvements to address this situation. And here's an example of the storm drain pipes that we pulled out on Phase One of the project. As you can see, the bottom has rotted out, and this was one of the ones that came out in one piece versus some of the others which did not. So just going over kind of project design elements and our approach and some of the considerations that we had to balance. As I mentioned, this is a full pavement rehabilitation project, curb-to-curb. This includes curb ramp upgrades. The curb ramp design focus has been on directional path of travel to the extent feasible. We want to prioritize when there are trade-offs to be made, that we prioritize keeping our crossings as perpendicular as possible and maintaining directionality through the roadway, meaning that if we are going to have a decision point, that it makes more sense to have that within the sidewalk where we're protected than within the crossing itself. Additionally, we have opted to upgrade to five-foot-wide ramps. This is consistent with curb ramp design guidelines, which have been presented at Transportation Commission. The city of Albany has desired additional kind of walkability improvements, and this is one that is, we've identified as a potential benefit. And with the curb radius reductions, which I'll cover in a brief second, we have opportunities to extend our purview space, to allow more infiltration and reduce the amount of concrete that we're adding under this project. What this looks like, I kind of covered it without skidding through the presentation, but what this looks like is the pedestrian path of travel has space to make wide turns, and there is a, there is a raised curb here in order to guide pedestrians towards the preferred path of travel, where we have the crosswalks and kind of pedestrian path identified. Additionally, as I mentioned before, existing drains are failing, and they require high maintenance where they exist at all. And so we are proposing to provide curb ramp, oh, sorry, catch basins ahead of all curb ramps. What this means is anything uphill of a curb ramp, we want to intercept flow to the extent feasible, based on existing conditions, and underground it so that we can have more flexibility and control of drainage when we're building our curb ramps. This is also beneficial to our long-term maintenance in order to minimize how often our crew has to perform emergency responses. Signal renewal, so included in this plan set is a new signal pole located on the northwest corner of Peralta and Marin. There's other small pedestrian push-button posts that are included, along with one additional pedestrian, oh, sorry, one B small signal pole relocation located on the northeast corner of this intersection. In addition to these visibility improvements, recognizing some fairly significant outages in recent years, the battery backup system is proposed. This is consistent with Masonic Intersections and is consistent with Caltrans standards. This allows us to have more response time for short interruptions of power. We also have pedestrian signal head upgrades for more visibility. Our vehicle detection is being upgraded to a camera system, and this is to provide more flexibility and remove and improve reliability when construction is happening in the area. And we are putting in audible pedestrian push buttons. This is consistent with recent upgrades to accessibility requirements. In terms of transportation elements, in discussions with Transportation Commission, we incorporated curb radii reductions. This red dash line is the existing curb line along Marin Avenue. This wide sweeping turn is challenging for pedestrians, results in vehicles slowing, not slowing down as much as they would with a sharper turn, and results in longer crossing distances. As part of Transportation Commission discussions, we also included painted bulbouts with posts on the intersection approaches. And on the departures, it's a painted bulbout without the posts because in those areas, the turning vehicle would not be turning that sharply into the kind of pedestrian area. And we have increased the number of marked pedestrian crossings corridor-wide. This doesn't mean every intersection has more. We, Marin Avenue is a very curved street as we get to the east, and in those areas, we wanted to focus on improvements with kind of a consideration on visibility around the curved streets. And so that includes, oh, sorry, jumped ahead. Mentioned shortened crossings, pedestrians, and increases. And so this is primarily in the locations with four-way intersection. We are proposing to include pedestrian crossings at all four legs. Where we have certain crossings that are in more curved areas, one improvement that we're proposing is a rapid rectangular flashing beacon at Ventura. This is a street where previously there was an angled crossing from the eastbound corner to the eastbound corner. With the curb radii reductions to sharpen the turn, this allowed us to be able to connect a more direct crossing from one street to the other. Additionally, with the RFB, we had some troubles with visibility if we were to provide the kind of standard style of RFB that you see in other parts around the city. And so we're proposing a pole with an overhead mast arm in order to better angle the pedestrian flashing beacon so it's visible to cars traveling at speed up and down the corridor, up and down this area. Additionally, we've reduced lane widths to 10 feet and increased the bikeway to include two-foot buffers on either side of a four-foot bikeway for eight-foot total bikeway width. Bike boxes are proposed at signalized intersections, consistent with the Masonic Intersections. So our corridor is now very similar in how the approaches are from the adjacent north and southbound streets and along the eastbound and westbound direction along Marin Avenue. And we have included wayfinding signage from San Pablo to Tulare, consistent with community desires. In 2024, the city completed the citywide street lighting assessment, and it identified intersection lighting along Marin Avenue as a high priority to light Marin crossings. The proposed improvements are currently in the plan set as a bid alternate in order to identify costs and ensure that we fully understand where this project costs are and have that discussion during bid award. As a reminder, we currently do not have a dedicated funding for street lighting, so these costs for these improvements will need to be weighed against other transportation element improvements that we may want. And intersection safety lighting, as proposed, currently is sized to accommodate a potential future pedestrian bicycle scale lighting improvement, which was also identified in the street lighting assessment, but that is currently underway and under discussion in other forums. Design challenges, so we wanted to cover the background of Marin Avenue and our approach to grading on this project. So Marin Avenue was constructed sometime before 1912. I actually have not been able to locate the initial construction date, but likely developed over time with multiple iterations before it kind of became what you see here in this 1912 image. The roadway currently is built on a very clay soil. There's also groundwater considerations that we have encountered, and this is, a lot of this is also things that we experienced with the Phase One project when we dug down below the existing roadway surface. And finally, there's a bedrock outcropping around Peralta Avenue, Peralta Street, excuse me, which is, we identified during some PG&E pole installations where bedrock was found about a foot below grade. So very, very shallow in certain parts of that intersection. And as mentioned previously, we do have some drainage considerations and challenges that exist on this roadway. In order to address these, so here's an example. This is from the original construction of the Marin Avenue Storm Drain Main in the 1930s. What I highlight here is the existing pavement is oil macadam. Macadam was predated our asphalt paving. This was an asphalt street with a layer of, oh, sorry, this was an aggregate street, so rock and kind of fill base street with a layer of asphalt sprayed over it. And this is a photo from Phase One. We can see an existing asphalt layer, an existing aggregate layer, and an existing sandy clay-to-clay layer. It's a relatively weak material, zero being water and 100 being steel. So we're definitely on the weaker side of that scale. But what I actually find very interesting, and apologize for taking more time than necessary, but I am going to geek out a little bit. This aggregate layer that we see identified here is likely the old roadway that's been built up over the years and overlaid with asphalt. On the drainage consideration, this dashed blue line here is that 1930 storm drain. Not in Albany, none of the intersections were connected in the 1930s. So since then, some intersections have been connected. Approximately every other intersection has been connected, but many of these intersections still exist as cross drains, and these are very shallow pipes. And as you can see, they fall right where we really want our pedestrian crossings to be. And so a big component of this project was getting the storm drain improvements in in order to provide flexibility towards our pedestrian and ADA improvements. Initial approach to our project was, oh, sorry, let's start with the existing condition. So this is taking that previous photo showing our Phase One and a section cut through the pavement. And you can see what we have here is, I apologize, this is not correct, but we have a layer of asphalt that ranges from three inches to 11 inches thick based on cores, and a layer of AB, AB is aggregate base, that ranges somewhere from zero inches to, I believe, somewhere around 12 inches. And it varies over, depending on where you're located, in the center line, along the curb face. But effectively, as the asphalt increases, the amount of aggregate base has decreased, and this is due to overlays over the years. The initial approach on the project design was to lower these intersections, and this was in order to meet ADA considerations with a less steep crossing. This is, the overlays over the years along Marin Avenue have resulted in a very high crown to bridge over the clay layer. And so the kind of initial first approach on these projects is often to lower the intersection. However, because of the clay layer that we're incurring, we end up with a significant cost and risk to the project where we may be kind of mucking around in kind of informal parlance, but where we might be in the clay layer and just spinning our wheels as we try to firm it up in order to construct. We worked with the designers to do a cost-risk kind of analysis on the various kind of approaches, and we have identified an improved approach, and we think of as an improved approach, which is that, with a revised approach noted down here, which is where instead of lowering the sidewalk and then keeping this and lowering the intersection, or sorry, instead of kind of lowering the intersection and keeping the existing flow line the same, we are raising our flow lines in order to have a better crossing. This allows us to avoid unnecessarily exposing the clay subgrade and removal of an existing foundation to this roadway, which is in good condition and bridging the clay. It also opened up some other benefits. However, there is some trade-offs. At seven of the 46 curb ramp locations, we have what we're calling a backwards sloped ramp. This is a ramp that instead of aiming downwards toward the road, reverses direction and goes downwards toward the sidewalk. And this is at locations where the adjacent hillside is rising, and there's, so we're trying to chase that grade upwards to the adjacent roadway surface. This is not any of the intersections that are on Marin, or any of the curb ramps that are on Marin. To address this issue, we spent considerable amount of time looking at ways to both remove or reduce the risk of obstruction in the pipes. We've included curb ramps ahead of every, sorry, catch basins ahead of every curb ramp, remove and reduce the risk of stormwater bypass and ponding in any area that's behind the sidewalk. And the way we did this is that we created, where feasible, we created high points and low points that are artificial, meaning that they don't follow the natural topography of the roadway. So where the center line of the roadway continues, as you can see in these arrows, within the flow line itself, we've created kind of a local catchment area to kind of funnel water into the storm drain. Additionally, where feasible, these storm drains has individual connections to the main. This reduces risk of obstructions in another section of the pipe, causing problems on this area. And we've spent considerable amount of time looking at drainage within these kind of wider sidewalk areas to maintain flow away from properties and property lines. So this is an example, I want to show you what this means. So this is an example at Saha, where we have a very flat ramp and recent stormwater improvements. You can see here, we've created an artificial high point, sloping back towards a curb opening. And this is video of how it functions in the rainy season. What we're proposing under this project is a very similar kind of situation where we've improved the catchment of water ahead of catch basins so that we can avoid water coming up towards the ADA curb ramps at all. An additional benefit realized with this revised approach is the use of cold-in-place recycling as a method of pavement rehabilitation. So cold-in-place recycling allows for a far greater amount of recycled material. We're recycling it in place. It also allows us to reduce the amount of heavy equipment in the areas of clay. So while we're removing some amount of pavement, we want to minimize how much vehicle traffic exists with extra-heavy loads of asphalt removal and asphalt replacement. And so we have one train, this is called the CIPR train, of equipment that runs continually in one direction only along, and we're not going back and forth, back and forth, which is really where the clay does not do well. It also reduces traffic disruptions. This is a much more streamlined approach, and we are seeing anticipated cost savings with this method as well. Finally, what I think of as a real major one that's often not talked about is this approach reduces a lot of the major edge drop-offs. This is if we were to do the kind of lowering of a roadway, we were to lower up to 30 inches and then rebuild it. And we might have that 30-inch depression there for a month or more. This allows us to avoid that. So it's far better for pedestrians, it's far better for commuters during construction, and also results in what I think is a far stronger pavement section than we would have otherwise had. In terms of project construction, we're seeing about a one-year duration, assuming no unforeseen issues. This approach is expected to reduce our risks of unforeseen obstructions as we're no longer going down, we're going up, which you can kind of see what's anticipated. Our estimated project costs here are $8 million. This includes about $1 million of street lighting improvements as a bid alternative. Again, we will be coming back with award to ask council for approval of the plan set and discuss whether the street lighting improvements are feasible given current funding and bid costs that come in. The bid environment currently is a little uncertain, so this is a good time to make sure that we understand what those costs are before making decisions. And then in terms of construction, our goal is to minimize construction impacts to the community and to the school. So what that means is that as part of this project, we've worked with Belichi and Emma to include project staging and pedestrian access. So we're anticipating having some more developed pedestrian temporary walkways around construction zones. This is, while this might during construction, they might be temporarily detoured for pedestrians, this means that outside of working hours or outside of active work in that corner, that will have a continuous pedestrian path that's easily accessible. This means during construction, though, is instead of having impacts on one side of the street versus the other side of Marin, for example, having these two under construction and then the southern two under construction at the same, you know, alternative times. Unfortunately, everyone will be impacted to a smaller degree, and this is because in order for us to ensure that outside of business hours, that we maintain our two-way vehicle access, we need to keep a 20-foot opening. With the five-foot pedestrian path in our work zone, that's just not possible if we have the two work zones immediately adjacent to each other. The good news is that during this work, and outside of work hours, there'll be a temporary walkway to help guide pedestrians. This looks like along a corridor is that we will be going up and down the corridor at diagonal corners, approximately two weeks to a month impacts at every corner with an overall anticipated average of about a month of impact at an intersection as we go up and do curb ramps, storm drain, potential lighting improvements in the rest of the project scope. I highlight Marin Elementary here as well. Marin Elementary has more recently had curb ramp improvements, and so we've minimized the amount of work there to focus on paving and the storm drain improvements both necessary for the storm drain improvements that allow us in the future, if we were to do any improvements there, bring it across the street. So right now, most of those are cross drains across the sidewalk, and they were recently installed. There is no need to change them out, perfectly, they work perfectly well. But at some later point, if we were to make some changes, now we have the connection to make that adjustment in a very cost-effective manner. And with that, I think that is the end of the presentation. May I open this up to questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Bring it to council for any question.
Let Preston take his usual...
Traditional leadoff position here. First, thank you so much, staff, it's all for years of work on this. First, thank you so much, staff, it's all for years of work on this. And it's worth relaying, there was actually a prior iteration even to the lower the, lower the intersection versus the raise the intersection, which was to like grind the whole street down, lower the crown of the elevation along the whole street. So what we're getting is actually the, what the third generation of design, which I very much appreciate to minimize the construction risks. I'm noting how old the, the storm drain main is. I imagine it's been videoed. What's the construction risk of it falling apart as these new connections are added to it?
I don't think the, we have video, there were not kind of system-wide issues identified.
Okay.
It's reinforced concrete, built in the 1930s, reinforced concrete, storm drains last 100, 100-plus years. If there's localized problems, these, it's large enough, you can walk in and potentially address them with the contractor. In the future, when we have our storm drain kind of repairs identified, and it can be done trenchlessly, there's, the industry has moved towards a lot of trenchless rehabilitation. So I don't anticipate in the near term needing to have any work done on it.
Great, thanks. Is the, are there any basing changes that the signals propose in terms of time or order or anything like that, or is it just basically making what's there now more reliable?
Making what's there now more reliable. Nothing that we are doing under this project would in any way impact the ability and in fact, gives more flexibility for future changes if, if so desired.
So yeah, in that regard, with the Peralta signal, it sounds like some of the existing equipment would remain. Would the controller be replaced? Is that part of the?
Controller would be replaced. That's one of our oldest, our second oldest now in the city. So the controller, essentially the entire kind of brains of it is being replaced. The, all of the conduits are being replaced in order to lower to the extent feasible or protect if we need to, where unable to lower. We've had multiple situations in recent years where contractor in saw cutting to do construction work has saw cut through because it's effectively six inches below grade and it needs better protection. If that's the case, we can't lower those, it needs better protection.
Right. Would leading pedestrian intervals be, be added as a part of this project, or that could be considered later?
I think this is, this project is really focused on the paving. I think if there's leading pedestrian intervals are not already there, that's something that's easily talked through at Transportation Commission and can be done operationally. It doesn't require a contractor to come out to do that work.
The, the lighting additional item, I worry obviously about the cost, that we don't have the fund for that. But at the same time, not putting in the underground facilities now would be obviously quite consequential for ever rectifying lighting conditions. So, and this is somewhat off the cuff, but teams, would there be an opportunity that would be reasonable and something you consider over time to, to just do the undergrounding part and leave conduit stubs, you know, if we get in a jam in terms of funding the whole thing?
So my, my recommendation is always against putting in utilities and features before we have the full, the full system. It gets forgotten, people cut through it, nobody notices it's cut. There's a, there's a whole kind of management of spares or futures that takes a lot of work. Additionally, the industry, in addition to kind of on the storm drain side going trenchless, this is also exists now on the electrical side as well with directional boring. And so this is a fairly wide street, so you could put a bore hole on one side and potentially pop up on the other side, bypassing some of those clay concerns, because now we're not open cutting. So that's always a possibility. And there's always the possibility too with developing improvements in solar, solar lighting, potentially looking at those opportunities if it doesn't, if it doesn't work out with this project.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I didn't realize directional drilling for electrical conduit. There was a directional drilling project for a new sewer line under Fairmount on Ashbury, which was pretty long-lived, pretty involved. So is that what, is that what it will look like?
No.
Or is it because it's too large a diameter and much deeper or something?
Yeah, we're, we're talking about two or three-inch pipe being kind of driven across the street. It's kind of a few days of work generally.
Okay. I wasn't there for months and months.
Yeah.
Okay. Like, no, I don't want to sign up for that. Thanks. I noticed there's no right turn signals in the plan, if I understand, being added for Santa Fe, for the Santa Fe direction at Santa Fe and Marin. I'm wondering if you can just talk about those a bit and how they would function, why those are being installed?
So that's because of the bike boxes. So with the bikes, having the bike box at the front of traffic, we don't want people trying to kind of get around that. And so that's also consistent with Masonic intersections, and the same thing is going to exist on, is being proposed on Peralta as well.
Oh, okay. I'm wondering, given that, and given that people biking represent, sort of say orders of magnitude less risk to people in crosswalks than motorists do, what your reaction would be to including a sign saying that people biking would be allowed to turn right on a red?
Preston, you're, I guess that's still a question. Okay, never mind. A little nervous you're getting into discussion.
I think that's something that if want, if you want to explore, doesn't, nothing in this project as shown tonight makes that feasible in the future.
I just want to have, thanks very much.
Here we go. When I, I want to thank staff. I mean, this is something, I moved into the house that I live in in 2006, and I've waited since 2006 for curb radii to be reduced. So super excited. And, and, and I think more, maybe just as important that is, the flexibility staff has done in creative ways of figuring out how to do what is being asked of them in a world of as many constraints almost as you could possibly get through in it. And so, you know, I'm, I'm often talking with communities about doing option one, which is let's get that crown down, let's make the road less steep for so many reasons and whatnot. And the realities of the way that this road obstructed, the realities of what's underground is so, so limiting. So I know I'm supposed to get to questions, and I'm, I'm getting to questions. But I, I think, Preston, you addressed one of them. I had another question. So you presented some slides that showed the pedestrian detours, and actually, I really appreciate that, that there's going to be a system in place for as construction is going on, those people who are actively using our sidewalks can still maintain a way of getting around the city. A little bit, or would love to hear more about how bicyclists along Marin are expected to detour around those pedestrian improvements?
So currently it's shown, we're thinking that they won't need to detour around them when they're not being set, they're just being set behind the, the bikeway. During construction, we are asking for a separate bike detour where feasible, or not detour, but a separate bikeway, kind of where feasible. Unlike Phase One, where we had bow bouts, this project does not have the bow bouts, which make that more challenging. And so there's a far higher likelihood we'll be able to provide a bicycle lane during construction in addition to the vehicle lane.
Great, thank you. Let's see, right-hand turn lane covered. That's it for questions. Lots of comments.
Any other additional questions from council?
I have a couple. Again, thank you for all this information, and thank you to staff who responded to all my questions this morning. I guess my main question, when we talked a few months ago about Solano Avenue and the ADA lawsuit and the time crunch, does that bleed over to this Marin project, or is this dependent of that issue?
Yes, this one is included in the, in that lawsuit. We do have a timeline. We're, in full disclosure, we're a little pinched on the, on the timeline here because we started with the Phase One and we're in process, so we, we need to get moving.
I guess my last question, could you describe the bike, the buffered bikeway? Could you just describe that a little bit more?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, um, you see here, the bikeway under this project is going to be consistent with the Marin Phase One width. The one, there's been a couple of changes to upgrade or update to kind of more recent guidance with the width of the green here between the two buffered areas. This is, there was an MUTCD update within the last year or so, since construction of Marin Phase One.
That's, that's actually fine, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you also for all the details and especially getting into the history of things. I like, I like, you know, digging all the way down, so thank you for all that. Just a couple of things, I know that you mentioned some wayfinding signage. Is this also going to be including some updated street signage as well for the, the actual street intersections? Will that be part of this project as well?
The wayfinding signage specifically is for bicycle navigation, for people to be able to find bikeways. The street signs, if they are, I, I don't actually know the answer specifically about the street signs.
Because this is something that I brought up before, is that our street signs are not, you know, too current code, they're not reflective, they're not easy to see.
I'm sorry, street signs meaning like, no right turns? Yes, those, those types of vehicles.
Those and also like the Peralta street, the name of the street.
Name. I don't believe the names are currently included.
Is that, is there a reason that those are not included in that?
I don't think, I don't, I don't know if that was, actually, Emma, do you ask the designer to make sure?
Yeah, so a lot of the street signs exist on top of existing stop signs, which are being replaced. Yes, we, I mean, the, the street signs can be updated as part of this project to answer the question.
Yeah, I would like to see that, that added into, into the proposal as well. Also, you know, just going along, as we saw, one of the signal posts was obviously being blocked by a tree, and that was obviously something that I see that you're remedying here. Are there other areas along the route, along Marin, where we also need to, you know, kind of pull back that tree foliage to allow more of the light to be visible, more signage to be visible? And, let's see, I was probably about that part of that question, and then I have a little bit more. But could you describe the, that condition with the, the trees and the lighting and how that's going to be affected throughout this project?
Maybe I take a first stab, and Emma, if you want to jump in. We didn't identify any specific locations where the existing signals have major, have visibility issues. This was kind of focused on what we are updating on the signal side. On the street signage side, we're putting in a lot of new signs and replacing a lot of the old signs. And those, when we situate them, we do look at the visibility with the contractor when we're situating them to make sure that they are visible, especially knowing that there's a lot of trees in this area. For the most part, what we're doing here is expanding the curb, so we're actually having kind of more visibility at the corner, and so that provides more space as well for signs. The street lighting assessment did identify also that, sorry, not yet, the street lighting assessment identified that there is a lot of tree canopy here in this corridor, and that's why this corridor and the intersection specifically were brought up as something that, where there might be priorities kind of needing to be discussed around improving street lighting. And that's part of the reason why the intersections were included. On the kind of corridor-wide, that kind of cost implication and also kind of without knowing exactly where that bike lane's going to be situated, it's a little premature to, to identify that location.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because as we know, you know, now with new laws and everything, you don't necessarily just have to cross in the crosswalk, right? You can cross the mid-street. So I just wanted to make sure that lighting is being addressed throughout the, the street, not just in those intersections. And then also noting how the older storm drains and kind of the less amount of storm drains, there is no real way to add in additional storm drainage, or is that necessary, or?
We're actually replacing the vast majority of the storm drains along this corridor. There were some more recent installations that were installed under the, specifically at Curtis and at Santa Fe with part of Safe Routes to School projects. Some of those storm drains were installed more recently and are likely in great condition still, within the last 10 years. Other than that, we are installing storm drains at every intersection along this corridor, both northwards towards Solano Avenue, along with southwards where the, along with southwards at every intersection where we need to intercept the flows ahead of catch basins, or sorry, ahead of curb ramps.
And I know like a few years ago, we had some involvement with some storm drains with, I believe, the city of Berkeley coming down through, correct me if I'm wrong, it was coming down, I think on Portland or something, that there was some connectivity going on there with the city of Berkeley?
That was on the sewer front, I believe.
Okay, that was on, thank you, thank you. So I was just trying to think of, is, is there any other, you know, partnering municipalities that we need to be in connection with on this project or not?
We have been in contact with Berkeley, confirming kind of the limits of our city border. During design, we identified that the crosswalk at, to Larry Street is located in the city of Berkeley, and we reached out to them and said, we're going to be ending our project at our city limits, but this crosswalk wasn't addressed as part of one of their projects. And since then, that crosswalk's been repaired, both I think through utility work and also believed through the city of Berkeley doing some repairs as well.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed while I was driving along Masonic today, like one of our newer curb ramps along that route, I think it was on Washington, looks like it's been disrupted, has had to be dug out. Are we anticipating any issues when it comes to replacing these curb ramps and then having the other municipalities pull out and undo some of the stuff that we're doing?
We have quarterly or twice yearly meetings with PG&E, East Bay Mud, and we also send out notifications to these utility companies of upcoming work on a fairly regular basis, so that this project should not come as a surprise to anybody. East Bay Mud, in fact, with that outreach, went ahead and did their renewal ahead of our project. It isn't to say there aren't emergency situations that come up or urgent situations. I will add that a lot of the, outside of the East Bay Mud work and, and gas mains, a lot of the work, a lot of the lines are overhead in this area, and so there's less risk. If somebody, if one of these agencies were to want to underground, then there's a chance they might go through. But the most costly part of this process is adjusting the roadway grading, replacing a curb ramp once it's kind of been installed and at the right elevation is much more straightforward. So if they cut through, for example, the work on Masonic, they're required to repair or replace in, in kind.
Okay, thank you. And just last question for you. I noticed it said the anticipation time that this would take would be from fall of this year to fall of next year. So we're anticipating an entire year. So we're anticipating an entire year that this project will be going forward, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you again, city staff, for your presentation, always appreciated. We'll move to, uh, public comments. City Clerk, do we have any public comment? Not seeing any public comments, we'll bring it back to the dais for discussion, and I'll just open up again with just saying, reiterating, thank you, but also, after seeing the presentation, a couple things. One, I will admit, I'm a little triggered and traumatized from my civil engineering days as an undergrad, and terminology I thought I'd never have to hear again. But, uh, I'm excited. My, my daughter walks down Marin Ave almost every weekday, and there are things teenagers love to complain about, safe sidewalks and accessible, uh, street paths are not things I ever thought I'd hear a teenager complain about, but I think that comes with the territory of living in Albany and, um, having a child that, uh, that is of, of age. But no, again, I thank everyone on city staff for being very proactive and thinking of, you know, innovative ideas and ways to, um, make sure that we have something that, uh, beneficial for generations to come, which is, can understandably be hard, it's hard to predict how populations shift and how level of service changes. But I was really excited to read up and, uh, learn a bit more about cold and recycling and, you know, that, to me, that, that, that wasn't something I recall ever, uh, learning during my, uh, my studies, so when I was reading up on that, I was, uh, quite impressed and just the cost effectiveness of it. Um, but yeah, again, thank you very much. I don't know if anyone else on council has anything more specific to discuss around Marin Avenue Rehabilitation Plan and suggesting comments, but I know these two are probably ready to fire away.
Well, I had just a question following along on the information that came out. Christie, the Vice Mayor's question, so what was the change in, in width guidance from Nacto for the, the cycling lane from Phase One to this phase or fa, first portion of Phase Two?
Uh, it was less about the width and more about the striping details.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so where the green is in relation to whether it's the whole width or if it's in just the kind of area we want people to stay in.
Center, okay, great, thanks.
I, I just wanted to really, again, thank staff and I, I know I started that earlier in the question section, but I think, um, I rode my bike today down Marin for, for this meeting, and my favorite part of Marin by far is Phase One of Marin that you all did not long ago, and I'm super excited to see that continue along Marin Avenue the rest of the way. Uh, I feel that, for me, that's the safest, safest, safest space as a bicyclist on Marin Avenue, because you have a buffer on both sides of you, and I particularly watched as cars were really conscious of staying in a lane that is more than wide enough for them, but, um, wide for them in that Phase One part, and that was really wonderful to know that I had space around me. I, I will admit that I, I read the staff report and made it all the way through the staff report until the last page and missed a key bullet, number three, to which I then jumped into the seventy-something pages of plan documents and geeked out on that. So I, I have no problem when it's a transportation project about, uh, the presentation geeking out. And I noted that at Ordway and Marin, I was really concerned that that one stood out to me because it's one of our widest intersections, it's one of the ones where, um, you know, just looking, it was one of the only places where we actually had two lanes of traffic heading southbound and being able to make a left and a right. Got on the phone with Nicole, started asking questions, talked to staff and then staff. Lightly did not inform me that on the last page of their report, it says, item number three, there are modifications to this plan set that you're reviewing, and it specifically says, uh, what they are proposing at Ordway, which is to reduce it to one, one lane southbound and provide a painted median, and so I was super excited to hear that. But I think that's a sign of our staff really understanding what our end goal is and really working within all the constraints and limitations we have and, and really finding us creative solutions. And you have, uh, sorry, I will just express it as I am so excited with the staff we have and the work that they're doing because it is, uh, they're way ahead of the game in terms of what I experience across the nation, let alone in California, so, thank you, staff.
And I'll thank staff for the, uh, the video standing out in a hard rain. Uh, you could actually see the rain on the video, which means it's, really was just pouring, usually can't even see it, so, uh, thank you for giving us the live demonstration of how it's going to work there.
James and I, and I didn't have a chance to thank James, I hopefully he's listening in, but James and I both ran out for that.
Teamwork.
Separately, we both made the decision to run out.
To go independently.
Yeah.
That's the staff we have, thank you. And thank you to the consultant as well for your work and helping, uh, explore alternatives in this project and bringing it to this point.
All right, well, I think at this time, I would gladly entertain a motion.
I will move Resolution 2025 dash 21.
I'll second.
Can I make a friendly amendment? Uh, just to make sure that we include the request of Councilmember Hanson Romero for the upgraded street signage to be reflective.
All right.
I've been accepted.
All right, friendly amendment accepted. City Clerk?
Councilmember McKee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, and thank you again, city staff, really appreciate it. Moving on to item number 11, new business, which I know everyone's just so excited about right now, um, request for financial contribution to upcoming Solano Avenue Association events. And I will pass it over to city staff.
So the item before the council is a financial contribution in the amount of $40,000 to the Solano Avenue Association to sponsor the 2025 Solano Stroll and three Stroll-ish events. So $25,000 for the stroll and $5,000 each for the Stroll-ish events. Over the last three years, the Solano Avenue Association has received from the city a contribution ranging between $25,000 and $45,000. Previous, uh, the previous funding was retained out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds or the council discretionary funding. As with past events, multiple departments coordinate with the Solano Avenue Association for the event. A report regarding in-kind costs for the city for the 2024 Solano Stroll is included, also as part of the staff report. And we also, over the last few years, the city of Berkeley and Albany have incorporated the utilization of Meridian barricades for the stroll to help further minimize potential safety issues. The estimated cost for the barricades for 2025 has gone up to $53,580, according to the quote we've received from the vendor. The Solano Stroll event also requires issuance of an encroachment permit due to the street closure of Solano Avenue, and in the past, the council has also expressed interest in ensuring that, uh, larger public events also incorporate highly visible and accessible bicycle parking. So it is anticipated that these elements will be incorporated into a resolution to sponsor the S, uh, Solano Avenue Association events pending your direction. Some things to consider financially, should the council authorize funding to support the events, the following, following options are available. And it should be noted that, you know, there, there can be a variation as, as well, so you could use the, um, ARPA funding. In the staff report, uh, we've provided a table of where we're at with the funding of the, the spending of the ARPA funds, which, um, we must spend by 2026, and you'll see that we're right on track at 70% expended. And the council can also choose to, uh, use, uh, your discretionary funding. The council receives, um, $20,000 each fiscal year, and there has not been any funding spent to date. So the next step will be pending your direction, we will come back to council with a resolution authorizing, uh, city sponsorship of the Solano Avenue Association events, if you choose to do so, and the allocation of the requested funding will also include the authorization for the street closure and requirements for bike parking if the council chooses to. So I'm available for questions, and also Alan Kane is here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council at this time?
Um, I, I do understand that most of the stroll takes place in Albany, but part of it does take place in Berkeley. How much does the city of Berkeley contribute?
Uh, I did a little bit of research and maybe, um, Alan will know more, but, um, based on the research I did, the city of Berkeley referred $10,000 per year for '24 and '25 to allocate to the, the stroll event.
Did they put any money, and I guess Alan's probably for you, into the Stroll-ish events?
Uh, the Berkeley Business Improvement District, which is a division of the city, so to speak, does contribute significantly.
You know what significantly?
Oh, $5,000 per event.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the, although the, we roughly consider two-thirds of it's Albany and a third is Berkeley, and the Stroll-ish events in particular, we have a kids' fun zone which takes up the bulk of our expenses, and that's in Berkeley, so that's why they, the offset. And then Isabel's research was absolutely correct, $10,000 a year.
Thank you. Any other additional question? Sorry.
Um, on the chart that we got for what was spent last year, what I'm going to refer to as indirect cost, there's, um, a total of 166 hours between public works, um, fire department, police department, community development, well, actually, that's not true, sorry, um, fire, public works, and, um, anyway, for event planning and pre and post-event setup and takedown, and it's 166 total hours, but there's no cost given. And I'm, I'm just curious, so the $84,000 that we do give, it's really more than that, is that correct? Because...
Yes, so the $84,000 is actually cost that the city would not incur if there was no Solano Stroll. So the cost, the 166 hours are hours that staff, um, does take to take care of the stroll, but it, it's during regular operational hours, so it's not overtime cost, but I did take the time to, to calculate that cost, and I would say, and this varies from year to year quite a bit, but it's about $16,000 more.
Okay, thank you, that was the number.
It's a total of, you know, approximately $100,000 total, if you add that to the current overtime costs and supplies costs that we have.
Right, um, and those costs will go up this year due to staff salary increases?
Yes, I did calculate that as well, and we, we expect about a 15% cost increase for the 2025 stroll. Just the barricades alone are increasing by 20%.
Right, um, and that was my last question, was, I looked at it, about $10,000 more. How sustainable is that? I mean, if they're going to go up $10,000 every year, when, when are we priced out? I don't know, that, that's maybe a hanging question, but, yeah, something to think about, yeah. Okay.
This is to cover Albany streets only, so Berkeley also covers their costs, their streets.
Thank you very, Vice Mayor McQuaid, question, Councilmember McKee?
Uh, so maybe a follow-up to Peggy's question, and I get that this may not be something you can answer tonight, but, given the escalating costs of the actual barricades to rent them, at one point, is it a price equilibrium to actually work with city of Berkeley to buy them, to be able to use them for multiple city events between the two cities or the county? Just saying, at some point, it might make more sense to try and buy these as opposed to renting them all the time. I understand there's a cost of storage as well. Again, you may not be able to answer that tonight, but just wondering if there's a...
We are actually in, in process of purchasing what we can reasonably house and store. We did receive a grant that's still in the inner workings through quite lengthy process to, to actually obtain and receive the funding for, but that will allow us to purchase a handful, um, which is a good start for some of our events, but certainly not to the extent that this event would need those. We also try and borrow from the county, um, as they are available, but, um, from time to time, that falls through at the last minute, so really, for the size of event, we want to make sure that they're in hand.
Okay. All right, we'll move it on to, uh, public comment. Do we have any members of the public?
Good evening, this is Lucinda Young. Set a few concerns. First of all, I do want to make sure that the bike parking is a specific requirement for the funding. We had a problem, uh, a few years ago when, um, there was a verbal discussion and it was verbally stated that, uh, bike, um, valet parking would be provided, but then when it actually came time to implement that, um, Solano Avenue Association thought that the bike racks that we already have installed on Solano Avenue were sufficient, and consequently, we did not have a bike valet parking that year. So I want to make sure there's not a repeat of that problem and that it, it is indeed a requirement of funding. Second, um, Solano Avenue, um, Solano Stroll, as wonderful it is, is, generates a huge amount of waste. We have a new sustainable foodware ordinance, um, that went into effect in August, but it is not being enforced by the city until, I believe, this August. My recollection is that there is a specific exemption for large events, which I think Solano Avenue Stroll, Solano Stroll would fall under, but in order to, um, really stand behind our climate action and adaptation plan, I, um, I, I know when, when the discuss, there was a discussion about this large event exemption, um, it was stated that, well, we can make, uh, sustainable foodware a requirement of licensing. So I just want to throw out there that maybe we need to consider making, um, uh, the sustainable foodware a, a requirement, and, and also what other measures can be taken to, uh, make this event, uh, apply some responsible waste management practices for this event. And, uh, also, I do have some concerns about this large increase in cost for the barriers, and as, um, um, committee member, council member, Thompson, um, mentioned, um, you know, at what point is this going to be no longer sustainable? So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, bringing it back to council for discussion.
May I suggest we look at these as separate items? The stroll and the Stroll-ish?
Perfectly fine by me.
And, and before we move forward, I just wanted to put this out as a reminder, um, just to disclose the fact that I'm a board member on the Solano Avenue Association as emeritus, but I do, am not a voting board member, so just wanted to make that clear as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, right now... So right now, per suggestion from Vice Mayor McQuaid, separating out the Solano Stroll, supporting funding for the Solano Stroll from the Stroll-ish events. So compartmentalizing those conversations for now. But I would imagine, in totality, comes back as a fully packaged thing. But I think I, did I capture that correctly?
Yes, and I think I'm going to ask for a separate vote.
Before we jump into that discussion, Lucinda did ask a question about the waste stream kind of divergence program for this role. Does staff or Alan, do you have any updates on any programs that have been implemented or any approaches that are being explored?
We, not to speak for you, we do have a close working relationship every year on managing the waste from this event and retaining a third party. In the last resolution or agreement for the event, the association was responsible for covering the cost of that consultant team and their hands-on for the event to maximize diversion.
Okay. I want to get the party started.
Do you want to start Stroll-ish?
Yeah, let's start Stroll-ish.
You know, I think Stroll-ish was great. Coming out of COVID, to help the businesses build up, all of the above. I'm on Solano a lot on the weekends, a lot all the time. But on the weekends, it's happening. There's people there Saturdays and Sundays all day into the evening with the outdoor dining. I think your goal's been met. If the goal was to bring people to the avenue on the weekends, I think that's happened. I'm not sure, at this point, there's a role for the city to support that particular part of it. I think we've sort of done that. And I don't think it's the best use of city funds at this time.
Any other additional comments or thoughts from fellow council members?
I would just ask that Solano Avenue Association representatives be given an opportunity to speak to that.
So that's a great comment. I mean, you are dealing with taxpayer money, so I appreciate the scrutiny. In terms of our Stroll-ish events, when we do these events, it's actually not about bringing people to the street. Well, of course it is. But it's about promoting those events regionally. When we do the Stroll-ish events, we spend roughly $5,000 in promoting those events regionally. So even if you aren't coming to the event, Solano Stroll is still out there as a media form. People are reading about something happening on Solano Avenue. Spring on Solano is happening on Sunday, the 20th. They may not go, but it's in Berkeley Side. Five, 10 families, Parents Press, Marketplace Magazine. I can just go on and on about where we promote these events. So it's important. I think the fact that the Solano Avenue is busy on weekends shows that we're doing those events well. And I agree with you. Solano by nature has a lot of foot traffic. But I also think that this provides an opportunity for Solano Avenue businesses to specifically market themselves to the participants of these particular events. Whereas on weekends, they're just kind of lost amongst 200 businesses. This is a specific opportunity for us to have bands, which is not something that happens every weekend, to have face painters and other attractions, which is not something that happens every weekend. And then lastly, there is that advertising factor, which I cannot understate enough, where Solano is out there in advertisements. I challenge you, next time you're looking at any sort of advertisement, East Bay Express, how many Solano Avenue businesses are advertising? Where do you hear about Albany? The important thing about these events is the fact that it's putting Albany on the map. Just to talk about the stroll specifically, the reasons to visit town have diminished significantly in the last five to 10 years. We used to get so much regional visibility from Golden Gate, sorry, Albany Bowl. I mean, people would come from all over the region to bowl there. We had Regional Draw at the Albany Twin Theater, which is now closed. We had Regional Draw for Golden Gate Fields, not only as a racetrack, but Golden Gate Fields had tons of food events, lots of events on weekends, bringing people to Albany. What's left? The Stroll, Film Fest, a good 5K run, I think. There's some stuff happening. But those are three major things that we've lost in the last five to 10 years. And gosh knows what's next. A Safeway, whatever the case is, a Sprouts. So we are giving people a reason to visit Solano Avenue. We're also giving people a reason to read about Solano Avenue or keeping Solano Avenue in their faces as part of the narrative, the way that the rest of the districts do, the way that El Cerrito does their Fourth of July, Sausalito does their Art and Wine, Lafayette does their Art and Wine, Alameda does their Art and Wine, et cetera. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Alan, while you're there, if you don't mind, I had another question. So in relation to there's 5,000 from, in the past, from Albany, 5,000 from Berkeley for the Stroll-ish events, is that the primary funding sources for preparing, getting the music venues, getting the advertisement out? Or are there other sources of funding that you?
So we have private funders. So right now, Waste Management is an example. Hopefully Albany Subaru in the future. That's the other thing about these events. They're all like sponsored by local businesses and local entities that feel that these events are important. Mechanics Bank, Belmont Village, The Cities, Albany Subaru, Allstate Insurance, et cetera. So, and Jerronico's. So we do have private sponsors. The funny thing about expenses for these Stroll-ish events is that a band will get paid $550 to do the stroll because they would love to have an audience of the stroll. For us to pay a band to play at a Stroll-ish event where people walk by and ignore them, it's actually, we end up paying bands and attractions a lot more to participate in these smaller events because they'd much rather participate in the flagship.
Thank you, Alan.
I just also wanted to point out that this year, that's different from the prior year, is that Solano Avenue Association did four of the Stroll-ish events. And they've decided to cut back on one of the events that we used to do the Saturday before Solano Stroll. And we've, they've decided to remove that event and concentrate more so on these three other events as well. And sorry if you have more comments.
Oh, my colleague just reminded me of a very important point, and it's just for the public to hear as well, is that the Solano Stroll's not expensive. Public events are expensive. So it's not a specific problem that's with our event. Our event is expertly run. It is like a Swiss timed machine, seriously, a Swiss watch. So it's not the stroll that it's expensive. It's just life never gets cheaper.
I'd also like to add that over the years of working in conjunction with the association and the different events, I've noticed that actually we have to look at this in a business development type of lens as well. We have been able to garner a lot of new activity and new businesses who are attracted to actually do business in Albany on Solano Avenue and also adjoining San Pablo Avenue because of the amount of, you know, advertisement and focus and engagement, welcoming to people, welcoming people to our business district and keep our businesses healthy on Solano, so.
Yeah, I view the Stroll-ish events sort of similar to the Parklets. I think they're a great thing. They came out of a terrible period that we went through. So I want to thank the association for putting together. And I think they're, I judge them to be very inexpensive relative to what they provide the city by way of economic development and exposure. And they're massively leveraged. I can't imagine that $1,000 actually pays for everything the city is getting out of it. So I really appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
And I'll just chime in really quickly and state that I've appreciated the Stroll-ish events that have occurred. My chief of staff has a habit, I think now, of annually enjoying the winter Stroll-ish events. There was a, I can't remember which one it was, but he found the bubbles outside, and I couldn't get him to go home for a while. The point I'm getting to is that what I appreciate about, appreciate about the Stroll-ish events is, you know, the hyper-local aspect of it. As weird as it sounds, I like the Stroll-ish events more than I like the big Solano Stroll event just because we're seeing our community members, we're interacting with people. And it's just something about that feels a bit more special and not feeling so crowded. And my son could run around and, you know, be free with the other children and, you know, develop core memories. And then, to my knowledge, maybe you could refresh my memory, Councilmember Hanson Romero. But I think I remember when I first moved to Albany, like seeing flyers for Stroll-ish events that were offering like paid opportunities, volunteer opportunities for high school students. And so I just want to kind of center that as well, that I do think the investment of Stroll-ish events, there's a certain level of being able to stretch our dollar locally that I think advantageous for a lot of us in this community. So I would say if we were to continue to support Stroll-ish events that that be part of the requirement. I don't know if any of that changed. My assumption is that it's still in place, but just to make sure that the guardrail's in place, to make sure that we are still using money to reinvest into our young people at the same time while putting on hyper-local events is fine by me. But I'm not the only one who makes the decision up here, and I'm always open to other people's thoughts, ideas, suggestions, recommendations.
Do you want me to just speak to that? Yes, in fact, I know that some of the entertainment and the vendors, in fact, a lot of the entertainment and a lot of the vendors are local as well, as well as the High School Key Club and other high schoolers are welcome to come in. And intern, sometimes they get acknowledgement for credits that they need for school, for volunteer responsibility. And then there are some paid positions as well. In fact, I think the Solano Avenue Association is looking for some additional interns at this time. So encourage the community and the students to reach out on that. So it is definitely a very highly collaborative community event in many ways, so.
Councilmember Mickey, did you have something?
I did. I mean, I think I want to circle lean back to Councilmember McQuaid when she started in this discussion about, you know, the overall funding. And I'm torn because I think the Stroll-ish events that I've attended, that I've had the opportunity to attend, have been really wonderful. And it is really, I think, something that is more hyper-local, even though it is attracting people from the region. Because it is about our shops and about our shops doing special things, it feels more local. It feels like it's a good return on the money. But I do think, long-term, and we will be talking about this relatively soon, but, you know, about our long-term fiscal status as a city, I want us to be able to understand what is long-term sustainable. And I would love also, at the same time, to be able to give Solano Avenue Association a heads-up that like, you know, is there a three-year plan? And I think when I, the first time we voted on this, I was pitching that, you know, this question of like, with the rebound after COVID and the need for Solano Stroll to restart and the lack of vendors the year before, was there a greater need and could we help provide that through ARPA funds? But now, as we know that we're going to be running out of ARPA funds, do we have an off-ramp, right? It's not a sudden cut in funds, but it's more of like, hey, over the next three years, our expectation is we're going to be cutting back, whether that's the stroll or the Stroll-ish. And what I would say there is that at least that gives Solano Avenue Association a heads-up of, here's the direction we're planning on going in. And every year, we'll vote on this, and we may decide that we have more funds or maybe there's a larger need or reason why the city would choose to put more money in. But I think giving the Solano Avenue Association a clearer picture of where we expect to be in three years is important for both us and for them, right? So they know that if we're going to be cutting back, it's going to be all the more important to try and hit up private companies to be helping funding or maybe approaching PG&E or whoever, these other organizations that might have funding that can help run many of these events. But for the Stroll-ish, that seems to be the one for me where, given it's started up and it's going, it's like, I would like to try and hold on to that, being able to hold that funding for Solano Avenue Association because it is hyper-local. And I share some of your comments, Mayor, about, you know, when I walk the stroll, I get a huge energy from seeing all these people and seeing all these stands and events. But it is primarily not about our businesses. And I know that many of the businesses now will put a booth up in front, and so that they try and do that as well. But the reality is, the vast majority of the energy is not about our businesses necessarily. So that is one of the things I appreciate about the Stroll-ish.
No, and I think that's a very important point to make and where I know where Vice Mayor McQuaid was going to about our fiduciary duties and responsibilities at leaders to be aware of the financial decisions we're making. I think that's very important. I do like the suggestion, recommendation that we work a bit more collaboratively also with our city staff to have a better picture of what things might be projected looking like in the years to come. Because I think that also helps not just the Solano Avenue Association, but any other entity that might be interested in seeking support. We do get several consistent requests throughout the year that are repeated. I think that's something to probably discuss another time, but definitely something I think that we should not allow to just exist in our periphery. And I'll just echo and reemphasize again that I'm definitely in favor of supporting the Stroll-ish event financially for the request, just partly because, again, as I mentioned previously, the hyper-local aspect of it. And, you know, maybe this is just me being selfish, but being able to build core memories with my chief of staff when he's running with the bubbles and living his best life. I can say, similarly to what you just shared, Councilmember Mickey, that when I do go to the Solano, the major event, the Solano Stroll, yes, it's amazing. But I also get a little overwhelmed. And last time, I kind of ran into a tattoo shop and ended up with a Solano Ave souvenir there.
Well, I'm going to assume it's a local business.
It's a local piece. You got to support your local artist. And I will swear up and down that this is just a tattoo paying homage to my chief of staff. But, you know, the point being, I would like to maybe move this conversation forward if possible. If we can, if we're able to establish a consensus on supporting the Stroll-ish event, then I would love to have a more intentional discussion about the Solano Stroll, the major event itself.
Have we thought about where the money's coming from? You know, I'm really concerned about where we are nationally, internationally, financially. We're in trouble. And I think we really need to be conservative in our money. You know, we have a lot of investments, and who knows what's happening there. But just, you know, I talk to people as I'm doing Meals on Wheels, and they're really worried about what happens if this program goes. How am I going to eat? And how do we balance that to Stroll-ish event? I would rather that we really thought about what our community life needs are right now. And I'm not saying it's not important, but I'm just concerned that we're kind of missing the people that are going to really need some help in the coming months, and we don't want the money to be gone.
And I hear that. I think that's also the benefit of being able to maybe get creative with a mix of our discretionary funds and our ARPA funding. And I think that, that's kind of what I was leaning in, leaning into particularly around the Solano stroll event itself. Just want to be careful about how we're using the ARPA funding. Because to your point, Vice Mayor McQuade, there, we may have things come up really quick, really soon where that money that particularly earmarked for certain needs is readily available to us and probably not as easy as pulling from other funds within, within the city or not so straightforward. So no, I just want to thank you again for centering that because that is important.
Just one other thought I had, you know, we did put money in for small businesses. Have we ever asked the small businesses, would you like us to be supporting this or is there something that you'd rather see? You know, is there some other way the city can support our smaller businesses? You know, we've done the facade program and that was great, you know, we don't ever really talk to them and maybe we need to do that.
Yeah, I, Councilmember McQuade, I, I think in terms of the budget side, I think my hope is this next budgetary cycle, when we get, when we look at our two-year budget, that we are explicitly at that time identifying, we are setting aside this much funds for the stroll. And that's not just potential contribution, but it's the in-kind time that's beyond normal time and that's an estimate for the barricades. And knowing that all of those are estimates, that we just go ahead and build those into our budgets because I'm guessing that some of that's already built in. But, you know, making sure that we do that and then with these stroll-ises as well because I think that's part of, if we do that in our budget, we can make, we can paint a picture of this kind of, whether or not it's, it's an off-ramping of how much funds we're providing or whatnot, but I think it's a clearer time where we'll have a better sense of where potential funds could be or what are we choosing not to spend our money on versus the annual, right before we do a budget or we get a budget update, we're making, we're, we're making these allocations, which, you know, in, in essence will still happen in the future, but we will have known that we had set aside a pot of money, but we'll be able to answer the question, well, is that money still there? And so I think that's the way that I'm looking at it right now. I, I, I do share, Councilmember McQuade, your concerns that we are going, we are going into a period of instability and we don't know how long that will be or what the effects will be. And, you know, I think Golden Gate Fields caused one sense of instability. We don't know what's going to happen with our, with the income that we get every year.
I would say we're not going into, I would say we are in.
Sorry, we are in, yes. And, and I, I think Meals, Meals on Wheels is just one example of that where we, we may be asked by others to provide funds and, and we have to be careful where we have funds. And, and frankly, in this period of instability, we don't know what that's going to mean for our sales tax returns. We don't know what that's going to mean for our local businesses or, or nonprofits for that matter, so.
Well, and I'd just like to offer, you know, I appreciate you bringing up the, the Periscope on that and, and looking at those other programs and the other funding requests that we do get. I would like to just offer this in the fact that, and while we've not been able to be very granular as far as what income is actually produced by these events through our businesses for sales tax and whatnot, this is one of these community events that is unlike a lot of the other community events that are more, so to speak, feel-good events in a way. They're not really generating any sort of revenue, whereas this, these events are. So that is one thing that I'd like to just, you know, bring about is if we're going to be looking at potentially restructuring funding for certain events throughout our community, at least this is one event that is actually giving back. So there is, there is a profit and loss kind of look at that, so. As well as also just throw this out there as well while I'm talking. You know, and, and one of the reasons that the SAA also, you know, created these events was partially because, you know, there, there are the people of mind who want to have more of the super hyper-local, less crowded, those type of events. But there's also the long-term traditional folk like myself and a bunch of other people that Solano stroll is kind of a rite of passage and a rite of tradition and continuing that tradition. And it's not just about, you know, people talk about, oh, well, you know, that particular store, you know, they closed down or, you know, they don't find value in the stroll at that moment. But what people tend to forget is it's not just about emptying the pockets of the people the day that they're there, but it's about bringing the level of, you know, recognition and, and people come from all over the place going, I didn't even know Solano existed. This is magical. This is wonderful, you know, and they really fall in love with the, the whole, you know, the whole tribe of, of everything happening all at once and, and all the different aspects and pieces and the multicultural, you know, groupings of people and, and different, you know, just a variety and mix of things. I mean, you can find basically anything you want on the Solano stroll day, you know? So it is a much larger event and it is for maybe a different mindset of somebody who enjoys being amongst a large crowd. And, you know, we, we get the benefit of some of these outside vendors who have large lists of people that they advertise to, that they in turn actually bring more revenue to our city by doing that. So we should be, you know, grateful for that as well.
Yeah, I think to the extent of the prospect of recession, this kind of economic development is more rather than less needed in order to sustain our budget. So I do appreciate the concerns, but, but I see the conditions as maybe headed towards need to do this even more rather than less.
And, and we're not talking about the stroll right now, but I, I think of the stroll as being such a high-profile thing that there may be other avenues of, of funding that we can help bring to Solano Avenue Association or bring to the city to help cover some of our, so I'm particularly thinking, we kind of missed the window, but Assemblymember Wick's office reached out to all of us, I believe, as an email, asking are there funding that you were looking for or grants or not? And, and I think we could try and take advantage of maybe some of our connections at the assembly level and the state level and see if there's funding for the security side of this, for other things that offset the cost of the stroll. Because that, to me, is the one that concerns me the most. I think the stroll-ish fifteen thousand dollars, it's, it's not no money, but I think it is money that is hyper-local. It is about bringing people and spending, having them spend money and time in our stores and in Berkeley stores. And so to me, that makes, I'm, I'm comfortable at least this year moving forward that. It is the stroll. It is that cost of not only what, what we give to Solano Avenue Association, but it's our in-kind time. It is the security cost. And that is something where I think, I mean, I'm putting it on my list to reach out to Assemblymembers and, and state senators and see is there someplace where there's funding? And I'm thinking from a security standpoint, there are different kinds of funds and grants out there and if nothing else, I think the two offices can help us identify kind of avenues for, for finding additional funding, so.
I like where.
So with that, I would, I don't know if we need to take a motion right now, but I'd, I'd move that we approve the request for the three stroll-ish funds at five thousand each and if we could use that from the council's discretionary funds.
Are we, are we okay to make two separate motion decisions? Okay, I'm looking for a second then?
Could I suggest we can, we move to the stroll discussion and then we can have two separate motions at the end? I may change my mind after I hear about stroll.
Okay. It works for me.
You never know.
There officially wasn't a second yet, let's, let's do that. So would you like to start? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll just get us rocking here really quick and just say that, you know, yes, clearly the Solano stroll event is quite demanding both financially and, and physically. And clearly the ask on the table, no minor ask. And we knew that last year, we knew, we know this this year. And again, to Vice Mayor McQuade's point, we do also have a responsibility to be very intentional and smooth about the decisions we make financially right now. And when I say right now, I don't mean just literally in this moment, but, you know, through our tenure right now, the remainder of our tenure on council is, it's anyone's guess where things might be shifting next week and a couple months and so forth. And so we do need to be mindful of that. And I, and I hear that and I appreciate Vice Mayor McQuade for, you know, just being that reminder on our, on our shoulders right now, like, hey, let's be careful. Because I, I also echo the sentiment that I don't want us to unintentionally make it so that funds aren't available for crucial basic needs services if we end up having to cross that road. And so I think before we make any decision about any financial support in this moment, we should also be taking into account how much we realistically think we'll have available, whether it's ARPA funds or discretionary funds or any other source. Because, again, we do need to be careful. I think that, the gentlest way to put it, last thing I would want is that we have several organizations coming before us and we're cash strapped, they're on the brink of having to close up shop and provide critical resources and services to our most vulnerable community members, the, those from low socioeconomic backgrounds, those who are elderly, those with disabilities, these are the things that are weighing heavily on my mind right now. And, and I also hear at the same time, like, and I'm a big proponent of this, the economic activity that big events like this provide, that sudden splurge of like economic vitality that we know that our community is capable of. So I'll just close my statement really quick with just saying that if we do move forward with providing support, the amount that we decide to provide for the stroll event, that perhaps the resolution has some more intentional language in there as well about sustained engagement. I don't know how that looks like. I don't know what goes on in the background, so I don't want to just, I don't want to tell, make it come off as like, I'm telling you how, telling someone how to do their job if they're already doing it. But maybe something around enhanced sustained engagement with the community and with our local businesses. To your point, Vice Mayor McQuade, about maybe surveying our local businesses and understanding what they need and what they want. I don't know if that's happened or to what extent that has happened. But we have an opportunity to put language that we deem appropriate in any resolution that we decide we would like staff to work on. I'll put my plug there at the council, Councilmember, Councilmember Hanson Romero is itching to speak.
Yes. I just wanted to kind of refocus some of these and reframe some of these questions to our city staff as well. I do believe that we did do something with regards to a survey as far as what community events were most, you know, welc-, or most popular and also as well as, you know, the activity with some of our businesses as well. Was that, is that correct? Am I remembering?
Yes, it, it is correct and we have that information. I would also encourage the council to reframe the conversation back to the staff report in front of us, which is a funding request for the Solano Avenue events. Through the ARPA program, we do have a direct connection with the business community and that's why you see the programs that have been established over the last couple of years. But I would say that's distinct, distinctly different than the request before the council this evening.
I just want to remind us that while they're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars, we're basically giving them over a hundred thousand. And I think, I think that's really important because if you think twenty-five thousand, that's not much. It's the hundred thousand that we've given in indirect cost. You know, we're paying people to be there, to plan, to do. And that's, you know, that's money because people are, are working and getting paid for it. So we are supporting them at a very high level regardless of how much else we give.
Which is, I believe, similar to what the city of Berkeley has been doing as well.
Okay.
I'm only concerned with us right now.
Okay. Well, and also I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Isabel, you had mentioned that there was a lot of the staff time that was already regular hour staff time, but this was just, there were some additional that you broke out, I believe it was fifteen thousand, I think you said?
Yeah, the, the regular staff time is sixteen thousand, but the extra cost for the stroll is closer to eighty-five thousand, eighty-four, what is at the bottom of the? Eighty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine. So that's extra cost to the city to support the stroll.
That the direct cost, the city, if the stroll didn't happen last time, was a hundred thousand dollars. Because you had sixteen thousand dollars in additional staff time expenditure that would not have occurred otherwise?
No, it's the other way around. So sixteen thousand is regular operational business hours. The eighty-four thousand is additional cost to the city for supporting the, the stroll. So it's overtime, supplies, the barricade cost. So those are all costs that we would not incur if we didn't support the stroll.
So the overtime is included in here because I saw, so for the police department, it says twenty-six thousand, five hundred for the event. That's the actual overtime cost or that's the cost that was incurred that would not have been incurred otherwise but for the stroll?
That is the overtime cost.
Great, thank you very much.
But that's sixteen thousand dollars of time that our staff is spending on the stroll as opposed to spending on one of, any of the other programs that, that, that we have under, under our, so I get that it's not additional money, but it is sixteen thousand dollars worth of hours that they're not spending on other programs. And so that, it just, there's a, there's a fiscal difference, but there are a finance difference, but, but like it is where our staff is focused. I'm not saying that they shouldn't do this, I'm just saying that, that it, what we are, the twenty-five thousand dollars is above and beyond essentially a hundred thousand dollars that, that we provided last year.
That's what we provided in the chart as cost and a staff hours total.
And I know that typically for some other events that we do throughout town in the past that we've approved funding for, I don't think that we've gotten quite the level of, you know, how much additional staff time it takes to produce those events and in-kind services as well. Is that correct? You know, like any of Juneteenth or other events, triathlon or music in the park?
They don't compare at all. So. We, those are mostly donation-based, like the council will choose to, you know, make a financial donation, financial contribution to the event, but staff time is very, very minimal.
Very minimal compared to in those senses, okay.
Oh, absolutely.
And dinner with Albany as well?
Well, that's our event.
Okay.
And that's a city-funded event.
Okay. Just want to. Just want to.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe a, a different way that I frame this is my understanding is just approximately, correct me if I'm wrong, 150,000 attendees of the stroll, if you think that is a dollar per attendee, I think that's a pretty incredible deal for marketing Albany and exposing people to Albany and to Solano Avenue.
I don't know that you can make that comparison.
And if it's helpful for council, I can provide a little bit of information on what the ARPA funding is currently funding for businesses. So we currently have two grant programs up and running, and one is a business attraction grant, and the other one is a facade improvement grant. Both are very active, but right now, we're seeing a lot of interest in the facade improvement grant, and both grants give up to $20,000 to businesses who choose to, and are eligible for the, for those grants. And as far as the public assistance program, we've continued to provide rental assistance, debt relief assistance, and continue to also fund the inside housing contract for our homeless outreach and engagement program.
You mentioned that, I think, the ARPA funds are 70% expended at this time? Is that true of both the allocation to economic development business as well as to residential?
Close. You know, small businesses, 72% expended, and public assistance, 68%.
And when did the, when did the expenditures really get underway? I mean, I was here, so I remember that if I had a good memory, but I don't have a good memory of when those expenditures actually started. It took a little bit to get the programs, you know, wound up and operating. The ARPA expenditures, I can't remember if it was like spring of '21 or?
No, it was later, later. '22, I think. They didn't start at the same time, one was six months behind, the business program was six months before the public assistance program.
So we're about three, we're about three years in on the?
Two to three years, yeah.
Okay. And we have another year and a half, approximately.
Year and a half.
Okay. The, the expenditure on the business side was somewhat front-loaded, if I recall correctly. It hasn't just spent even through time, has it?
We've spent, you know, a little bit over a million dollars on grant programs to help alleviate the impact of the pandemic. And now we're doing these other grant programs that are not as robust in funding, but help in different ways. And it's the same also for the public assistance programs, you know, there was a lot of need last year, we kind of saw a peak in, in need for the, for the funding and providing relief to our residents. The need is still there, but we're, you know, the, I would say, the, the requests are still coming in, but not as fast as they were last year, I would say.
And on the business side, I guess what I meant was, I think the rate of spending was higher early, it hasn't just been consistent, you know, the same amount of spending every quarter.
Exactly, no.
Because there was that grant program to recoup losses.
And we did also the gift card program, so we did a lot when we received the authorization from, from the council to move forward with business programs.
Thank you.
So with the projections going the way that they are, so to speak, do we see, like, are, are we going to have, it sounds like we're going to have adequate amount of funds to continue on for the next year and a half?
I mean, we, we will grant, you know, we will grant to businesses the, as many grants as we have money for. Their plan is to spend down the allocation by December 2026. So the, you know, we, right now, we're on track to spend that money, yes.
And is this, these, this money is included in, in that?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. And, and the, this potential allocation is kind of already projected in that, that calculation, would you say?
Right now, the money is really earmarked for the grants, for the grants program. I mean, we can always tease out, you know, a few thousand, you know, what, we will tease out what the, what the council directs us to do out of that funding, and we'll adjust accordingly, yes.
And does the?
The money has not been promised to anyone yet.
Gotcha. And, and I guess I'm just curious if staff has any additional information or, or recommendation to provide to us for this topic? No. Just checking.
I'm glad you asked that question.
I think that's what they're paying us for.
There's some silence, I, I don't like the silence. What are you thinking, Councilmember Jordan?
Well, I, I, my preference is to allocate the full requested amount out of the ARPA funds. I don't want to take it out of the general fund, because that's where I'm more nervous. I think we are actually going to realize a deficit this year, it's not going to be large, but going to realize a deficit for, yeah, I think for the second time I've been on council because of the, the payment that had been made, the legal payment that had been made last time, we had a surplus, not accounting for that extraordinary expense. I think this time, even without the extraordinary expense, we might be going into a deficit and want to minimize that. So my preference is whatever we allocate, we allocate out of the ARPA funds.
I was thinking a little bit about the funding side, and, and glad that Vice Mayor McQuaid asked us to wait on the voting, because I've been thinking a little bit more, I mean, the, with the stroller being so focused on our local businesses, I, I think the small business ARPA program is like the place to pull the money from. But then I flipped to the other side, with the stroll being really about the bigger city, and yes, it does do some advertising for local business, but it's not, that's not really the primary purpose. To me, that seems more like a council discretionary fund item. But that also means to me that it's potentially not fully funding the request that was made of us. And in some ways, it's 15,000, throw something out there, 15,000 from ARPA, 15,000 from council discretionary, so we still have something from council discretionary. And I leave it to Solano Avenue Association to figure out how they want to really split that money, whether it's 3,000 per stroller, the remainder for the stroll, but it's really a pot of money, we're saying we'd love to support both the stroll and these three events. How you particularly split that money up is up to you, but it's really understanding that some of the money is coming for the strollers, that's really about our local businesses, and the other one is really about us having a big street party and celebrating the city, and yes, gaining exposure. But I have literally run into people who have been to the stroll and not realized that they were ever in Albany. Somehow missed the sign that says, "Welcome to Albany," it's on Solano Avenue. So I think it is one of those weird situations. And in some ways, not that important that they remember they were in Albany, they remember the businesses, if they remember Flowerland or one of the other many businesses in Albany, then we've gained something, but.
Yeah, I would say that's, that's the key, is that people get introduced to Solano and reminded of Solano and over and over, rather than knowing what city they're in. I mean, I don't think many people know when they go travel through the area, what city they're in, because we have 101 cities in the Bay Area, so, and they all tend to run together.
I'm sorry, could you repeat what you, where you want the money to come from?
15,000 from small business portion of ARPA, 15,000 from the council discretionary. So that's a total of 30, and the request was 40, and so, I'm not set on those numbers, but I'm just trying to figure out how we balance that. The problem I have with spending ARPA money on the stroll is I don't think it is as directly related to our small businesses. I, I could be convinced otherwise.
I sort of like that idea, that's closer to anything else I've liked so far. And I think the caveat is what I think you said more previously, is that we need to make it, we need to make it clear both to ourselves and to the business organizations that we're going to need to have a, a new plan going forward, and, and how to, how to look at it over the next several years.
While I'd rather do that, I'd rather not reduce it tonight, have that conversation by the time we do the budget, or have it as a separate agenda item, rather than cutting it here or now.
Yeah, I would agree, because I, you know, unfortunately, the way that, you know, events are done and stuff, a lot of this stuff is already preloaded, and a lot of this, you know, while every year, every couple of years, presentations are needed to be made so that the funding, unfortunately, the way the government goes, and, and when we talk about this funding, a lot of these plans are already put into place, so. Yeah.
Sorry.
No. So a lot of the plans are already put into place, and also understand that sometimes when you're cutting certain funding and stuff like that, that, then that money's got to still come from somewhere else, and so the association generally needs time in order to, you know, whether that be increase membership rates, look for other ways of funding sources, but it's, it would, it's definitely a hard scramble, and a lot of it, a lot of the funding that is requested is also usually to cover, you know, a lot of the requests that are made along with the funding, like the bicycle valet, which costs?
A thousand bucks.
A thousand dollars, which has increased over the years too, that request continues to grow, as well as green merry, and, you know, additional staff support throughout the day, that may be paid, paid staff through the association that day. So I think it would be difficult, a more difficult challenge, just trying to figure out where those funds are going to come from, reducing it tonight, yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, this is why I started the conversation, saying that I, I don't really love getting this request so late in some ways, because Solano Avenue Association is, is down the road, and they've planned things out, and now we pretty much, if we were to say no, 100% no, right, you guys would be, they would be in major trouble. But even any, even a reduction of any amount is trouble, and that's why I feel strongly that, like, in an ideal world, the request would happen, the requests we're seeing tonight would really be about 2026s, you know, Solano Stroll and stroller, so that it's, you, they have a sense of what support they're going to be getting from the city ahead of time, so they know what fundraising they have to do, they know what they can and can't promise to do to their business members. But I feel like, I have felt every year that we get in this pickle, where it's like, how do we, if we were to say no, that could be very devastating to the events. And we're also not necessarily budgeting out the money as a city to say, we know that this is going to happen, and it's going to be about this much. And so, I, I'm comfortable with the number I threw out, because I felt where the pots of money were coming, I'm, I'm also comfortable with the discussion about more, but I think there is a hard conversation that needs to happen at the budgeting meeting about what can we allocate? And ideally, you're thinking, because that, that would give Solano Avenue Association, and as they plan the stroll and the stroller, is knowing that maybe next year, we're only, we've only allocated $30,000, right? And so they know that they've got to tailor it around that, and they've got lots of time before September 2026 or '27, because we'll be looking at both of those years. Whereas right now, I, I don't, makes me really nervous.
Want to make a motion? Does party go on?
Before any motions are made, I, I just want to say really quickly for me, I'm, I lean more towards the side of funding in full this year still, because of the ramifications it could have if we don't. Because we allowed a precedent to be set the last couple of years. Knowing that we're having this conversation, and I'm sure leadership from Solano Ave. Associations, you know, being mindful and being aware, and I think, you know, it's an opportunity for all of us to have more, more intimate discussions around budgeting moving forward. I think as long as we're clear that, you know, this may be the last year in, in a few years where we're able to offer this amount, just given the instability at the federal level, and then some of the nuances that we're dealing with, rising costs, and staff time and so forth. The reason, though, I want to say why I am still supportive of funding in full, even though I do have a handful of reservations, is that as much as I joke that the, the event was huge and it made me feel overwhelmed at times, and may have coerced me into getting a souvenir that's permanent, I do think about the extraordinary number of, of not just small businesses that had their pop-up going on, but many of the organ, local organizations and nonprofits that are able to advocate for themselves to a large number of people. I'm not saying that's going to solve the issue that may, that many may potentially encounter, but it at least gives them a platform still, and I, I'm not ready to take that away from these entities and these organizations who may be relying on the Solano Stroll as one of their keystone spaces and platform to be front and center with folks. Because I can say, this, my first Solano Stroll that I attended, that's where I got linked up with a couple nonprofits, I wasn't aware of them. And so, just, you know, being able to know what their resources are and what they provide, and knowing where, you know, where their services can be found is crucial, is critical. And you never know, there may be quite a few in attendance who are, you know, having a harder giving, because they're, they're privileged with that amount of wealth, to be able to just say, hey, I'll donate several hundreds, several thousand to your organization. I don't know, that, maybe that's me having wishful thinking, but the point being, again, I'm not ready to take that away from many nonprofits and organizations that probably rely on this event's visibility for them, because it is major. And it does provide them space to directly engage with the public, folks who they may otherwise not be able to connect with. And so, again, I'll circle back to my initial statement, that I'm ready to support in full still where that money, how we're pooling it. I'm still up for swaying on, you know, whether it's fully ARPA, partially ARPA, however that may look. But I think it has to come with the understanding that we do need to be creative, and we do need to look at numbers differently after this.
And to, to your point, yes, that is true, there's a lot of nonprofit entities that rely on the stroll as kind of a major funding source for them as well. It's, it's a huge day for them to generate funds for their organizations as well as outreach. So it's, it's got many folds to it, that many, you know, many beneficial impacts to many different people of many different walks of life, so thank you for bringing up that as well, because that's something, sometimes that's very overlooked, and it's a lot of local organizations, you know, Rotary is there.
Rotary hasn't been there recently.
Sorry, I missed that, because they're in the parade.
I was going to kind of push back on that, a lot of local Albany organizations don't want to be in this, in the stroll, because it's not Albany. It's so many outside people, which is great, but they're not looking to support local organizations. So it goes both ways. Can I make a motion? Are we ready for that?
I'm happy to make a motion also.
Good. Go ahead, is there a motion?
Well, I will bring a motion forward for us to allocate $15,000 from the ARPA Small Business Program, and $15,000 from the council discretionary funds to support Solano Avenue Association.
I'll second it.
Well, our substitute motion of allocating $40,000 from the ARPA funds.
I would second that.
All right, we have a substitute motion on the floor.
Sorry, just to confirm, you said $20,000 from ARPA?
Forty thousand.
Or forty thousand?
Good catch, city clerk.
Okay, so we're doing Councilmember Jordan's motion with the second from Councilmember Hanson Romero. $40,000 from ARPA fund and then $15,000 from?
No, it's just forty thousand. So, it's basically the, what I understand is a recommendation, I think is.
The full request?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey?
No.
Vice Mayor McQuade?
No.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. And before I move on to the next item, I just wanna express my thanks and gratitude for all of us having this intense conversation. And I think it just speaks to the level of responsibility we know that we have to carry. We all do a lot of good work with each other. Moving on.
And actually, just before you move on to that, maybe there is a way to work with city staff moving forward to, I know that this is always coming at this timing, but is there, maybe there's a way that we can get ahead of that or?
Well, if I could just offer, I know at the last biennial budget cycle, I brought forward a discussion at that time of funding cert trainers, who I think were working as volunteers at that time. So, I think that, I see that as a mechanism for saying, you know, "Do we wanna have a light item for this and how much would it be?" But, yeah.
Based on the conversation this evening, it's clear that this is a well-loved event and supported across the council. As you see your two-year budget come through, it will include a decision on the level of funding that we commit in the budget so that we can understand that this conversation has been held instead of having it every year. And then, if there's some funding issues, we consider them at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number 12, council subcommittee reports. We will start off on this end with Councilmember Hanson Romero.
This time, I actually included some topic briefings that I get oftentimes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Included some topic briefings that I had because I always get these great informational pieces that come to us after our Waste Management Meeting, or sorry, Waste Management, StopWaste.org meetings. And so, I believe City Clerk has attached, was that attached? Yeah, yeah, thank you. So, for that, there's, Alma provides us with some information as well as plenty of other programs that I also received additional information from Director Burrows with Stop Waste of many other food waste updates, a lot of the, a lot of the new proposed state laws, a lot of outreach, project updates. There's just many, many things going on with this organization. And it's just amazing how many different channels and levels of work that they're doing to really provide a more circular economy with Stop Waste and pay for additional education and sources to our community. And they really think very thoroughly about, you know, being able to branch out and also advertise in different ways. They're talking about doing additional, more social media, more onsite groupings, and more video training and so on and so forth. So, as always, I encourage people to check out their organization. Thank you.
I've been using the resource feature on the website. And it's pretty amazing. They have fluorescent, compact tubes, circular, you know, they've got like every kind of fluorescent bulb you can think of and what you can do, what to do with it when it's no longer working. The Alameda County Transportation Commission met at the end of March. It was going to announce the candidate to which it was working to make an offer for executive director at the request of that candidate, not to have their name revealed. That did not occur, but there is an offer in negotiation.
Hey, I like the secrecy and mysteriousness. We'll move on to Vice Mayor McQuade.
Okay, I did attend the Solano Avenue Association mixer and the League of California Cities Environmental Control Policy Committee meeting. The report is attached. I also attended, I think it's District Four, a presentation with Director Katz. And then, I had a library, a county library board meeting last weekend in Niles. If you've never been to Niles, it's an interesting little place with a great ice cream store. Bring your chief of staff, that's great. The one thing I would say about that, the youth poet laureate opened, the applications, I think, opened April 1st. So, we should probably talk, get this out publicly a little bit. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Cal Cities Housing and Economic Development Committee meeting in Burbank. And we had a presentation from some developers about just, under the revenue taxation kind of. And it was interesting, one of the examples that was brought up was the Whole Foods that was meant to be in Albany and ended up in Berkeley. And the discussion there did not talk about Albany at all, but did talk about how there was a champion, there was a local champion on the Berkeley side who helped make that happen. And kind of just the general discussion about how also the local businesses and local owners there were all on board with kind of creating what is now the Gilman District. And I mentioned after the presentation that we in the city of Albany had an opportunity, had a Whole Foods, for a variety of reasons, that didn't happen. We have a wonderful grocery now in our town. But I think, I also pointed that to being something that helped point us in the direction of doing the San Pablo Plan, which now, communities had a discussion. We clearly lay out what we want. And so, one of the things that the developer said was, "We wanna work in places where the community has clearly states what they want. Their regulations clearly say what they want." And so, that we can decide before we ever go public, do those things match with what we wanna be able to do? And so, that there isn't the uncertainty of what would happen once they get into the public review process. And so, I mentioned that to the community because I think that was really important for the other electives to hear, is that there was a flip side to this that you're not hearing. And so, that was a really great presentation. Couple of updates. Let's see, AB 650 is a housing element draft bill that will smooth the process, give more time for communities who turn in their housing element early to do their review. And also, if passed as written, would give those communities who turn their draft in early, protection from builder's remedy while they're preparing edits based on HCD comments after the deadline. And so, there was kind of this, this push to make it that if you turn it in early and you give HCD more time to review, which gives us more time to react to them, the ability to be, have builder's remedy waived. It is, I think there's a lot of hope at Cal Cities that that will happen for the local electives because of the various experiences people had with the housing element. The other one is SB 239, Advisory Body Teleconferencing. It would essentially allow advisory bodies, so non-decision-making bodies, to teleconference in to meetings. It's a little bit nebulous about what that means. Is it every meeting? Is there a certain number? But to loosen it up to more closely match the state advisory body law, which gives them the ability to call up from, and so, there was also a lot of support at Cal Cities for that because that is something that many people feel will provide more, be more equitable, inclusive process. We'll say there was some concern about the need for in-person interaction and the benefits of that, but that was part of the discussion. There were two major things that did happen. AB 306 was a, is a proposed language from Schultz. I can't remember if that's, that must be an Assemblymember Schultz. Having to do with the state building code. And the big thing there is essentially what it's saying, there's still some clarity that's needing, is that no changes will be made, will go into effect in the building code for six years. Unless they have to do with fire mitigation, wildlife, you know, urban interface, single stair exits, a couple of other things. But the primary thing that it is, would stop from going into effect is additional kind of sustainability initiatives that would be implemented through the building, whether that's stricter, you know, insulation values or whatnot. And so, that was discussed, the housing that ended up passing pretty strongly. I voted against it. My understanding is that the climate action side opposed it, so voted to oppose it. So, it will be interesting what the board decides, whether the board of Cal Cities will support or oppose it. Just so you understand, Cal Cities will take one of five positions. Support, support with amend, oppose unless amended, oppose or no opinion. And so, it will be interesting to see what comes of that. The other one was AB 87, so again, another assembler bill. This was about mixed-use development. Turns out in SoCal, people are using the housing density bonus law to get additional height, additional FAR, bigger buildings, like tremendously large buildings. And the example comes from San Diego where they built 10 units of housing and, but like 90% of the building had nothing to do with housing. And the vast majority of the bonus that was asked for had nothing to do with housing. And so, they're trying to close that loophole and say, "Hey, like, the whole reason why you can get those bonuses is because you're providing housing when it's 10 units in a giant building." Like, this is 27 stories or something, so like, think about that, okay? Like, it is, you know, that's kind of an abuse of the law. And so, that's one that was voted in and the Housing Committee voted to support that bill. I would say that there was quite a bit of discussion about that, but in the end, we did vote to support that. There were a series of other bills, but those were kind of the highlights.
Thank you, Councilmember Mickey. And I'll say for me, we had our monthly Ava Community Energy Meeting last month. One of the bigger things that came out of that meeting was concerns about the support letter for SB 540, which is, has the intentionality, it's called the Pathways Initiative. The intentionality behind it is to have an aim at reducing our energy bill and reducing pollution, though there is some pushback. I won't digress into it right now. I will just say from personal perspective, I think it is a bit valid. But this did lead to putting some of the agency on the Marketing Regulatory and Legislative Committee within Ava to review this a bit more indepthly, which I have the fortunate benefit of being on. We're hoping we can get our first meeting achieving quorum next month so that we can get the ball rolling with that. Additionally, a couple of weeks back, I did make a visit to the Albany Youth and Government Delegation. I'll just say, I'm thoroughly impressed with the young folks there. And I happened, I got to stumble on a treat and watch them give their campaign speeches and answer questions. Some were very interesting questions, but it was very enlightening to hear, like, what is on the minds of young people? What do they feel are most concerning? And how do they feel someone's gonna represent them in that capacity? But I did share with them that I would love to make this an annual thing because we have rotating mayorship that we have, the new mayor come and maybe participate and watch. And I gave a plug for our vice mayor, who happens to serve on the board. But no, it was a really fun event to attend. There were other weird things happening that were beyond my understanding, but apparently, the high school students are playing a game called Assassins. All I know is I seen kids running down the street. And I just, I'm picking up my daughter and I'm just laughing. I'm like, in where I grew up, that probably would be a no-go. But like, because this is Albany and, you know, everything, all systems ago here and it's, these are safe streets, it is what it is. But I'll just say to, you know, probably helped end this meeting on a much lighter note. I seen a parent pull up and they said, "Have you seen a young man?" I said, "I ain't seen nothing." And she goes on to say, she's like, "Well, if you see any kid hiding behind a can, let me know." I'm like, "Okay." And she said, "I'm waiting for my son. He's trying to, he's trying to get his target for Assassins and I'm his getaway driver." And so, after attending this Youth and Government Meeting and engaging with that, it was just a really positive reminder to me, like, how invested the parents are with the kids' activities and like how well the parents are, for the most part, in tune with what their children are doing. And I wanna highlight that because there's a lot of kudos to be given to those who maintain the sense of safety that we have in our community and that sense of safety that the young people were asking about during that meeting as well with their peers. And so, it was really warming to see that and to see them ask the people who are gonna represent them, "How are you gonna connect with our leaders in this community?" I felt like they're taking, throwing shade at me in that moment. But it was a really great event and I do encourage all of you, the delegation time session's over this year, but I do encourage all of you to try and make time to go there in the fall when they reconvene. Our future is in good hands. I will, it may take a few years before they are ready to run for office here, but I think our future is in good hands with them. And that essentially closes out.
Sorry, Mayor, I apologize. I led with AB 306 and forgot to lead, forgot to answer why I voted against it. So, one of the provisions in there is it would not allow reach codes. In other words, it would not allow local jurisdictions to either adopt ahead of time something that had gone through the process at the state level, nor try and adopt something on their own to be a reach code that might be environmentally related. And so, I would specifically point to, we as a community have been looking at electrification. And so, it would preclude us from doing a building code, a local reach code that said that you could only do electrical or you had to be electric-ready when you build. And so, I just wanna note that, that essentially, you had to have already had that on the books January 1st of this year for you to be able to adopt it. So, again, for a lot of reasons, I voted, that was the primary reason I voted against it, was that we wouldn't be able to locally make amendments.
And I voted against it also.
Oh.
I did?
Thank you.
That was one.
I'm loving the energy on this side. Thank you, everyone, for your committee report. Moving, or do we have any public comments? Okay, moving on to item number 13, future agenda item. Do any members of council have future agenda items that they'd like to propose? Any members of the public? Not seeing any? Okay. Ooh, there we go.
Thank you. Now, it's a long night, so I'll just be brief. I would like to see EV chargers as a new agenda item. We have. as a new agenda item. We have, I have discussed this before at Good to the City at a number of times. Our, our Climate Action Adaptation Plan makes EV chargers an essential component. And our city council, our previous city council had approved the installation of five EV chargers, public EV chargers, and it was supposed to happen in 2021, and it did not happen. I recently sent a, an email to our city manager and our sustainability staff and the Climate Action Committee, alerting them to an EV charging grant opportunity that's recently come out from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And I'm hoping that that can be looked at as a possibility for funding, because I understand that, that, that was the barrier to the previous installation of the five chargers. So this is a very important part of our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I, many cities around the state have public EV chargers, our neighboring cities.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Thank you. All right, that brings us to adjournment, everyone. Thank you very much. I joined this meeting at 10:09.